If everybody would please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance to our flags. This morning, we're so blessed, we're joined by Pastor David Bendit from Rock City Church for our invocation. Pastor?
Jesus, we thank you so much for your presence here today on such a big day. Lord, I thank you, God, for a right budget, the finances, and everything that we need to run this city the way that you want it run. I thank you, Lord, for the leadership and the governmental positions that you put here today and for this court. Thank you so much, Lord God, for strategy, wisdom, insight, and the mind of Christ in every decision that we make. We love you and we thank you that this city belongs to you. Thank you for strong families. Thank you for a great community to live in. And thank you that this city is getting stronger and better and more confident in who we are as a body of Christ. We love you so much and I thank you for unity in all the governmental positions and in this court. Thank you, God, for causing us to keep our eyes on you, to fix our eyes on your purpose and your plans and everything you've established for this city. Unless you watch the city, the watchman watch in vain. So watch over us, protect us, watch over the children, the families, the businesses, and in every arena of this community. I thank you, God, that your hand is involved. And we love you and we thank you for this day. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Commissioner Gonzalez, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm glad everybody is here. It looks like a standing room only crowd. Today is August 28th, 2019, and we are at the Noises County Commissioners' courtroom at 901 Leopard inside the Noises County Courthouse. And I noticed that all commissioners are present, and therefore, Madam Clerk, I certify that a quorum is present. At this time, I'll ask Timothy to come forward and give our routine but so vital and critical information entitled "Safety Briefing."
Good morning, Judge.
Morning.
Commissioners, ma'am. We are meeting here today on the third floor of the Noises County Courthouse located at 901 Leopard Street. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the courtroom. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five other fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium immediately outside the courtroom as well. There's an AED located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom by the Human Resources' Office. Participants today responsible for dialing 911 in the event of emergency are Tyner, Little, and Edward. Participants who are certified for CPR and will be conducting today if needed is Deputy Vasquez. In case of evacuation, our egress route will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside the courtroom. Proceed out the double doors located on the pan side of the courthouse and muster across the street in the parking lot. In case the need of shelter in place, we will remain in the building and await further instructions by the Noises County Sheriff's Office. Our shared topics for today are safety of our employees during the holiday weekend. That concludes my brief.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Just as far as safety goes, Timothy too, I know I received unbelievable data point yesterday about extreme heat. And, you know, it's always hot. I mean, it's summer, it's August, it's hot. But I think it's important to note, this extreme heat is scheduled to be over 113 degrees as far as the effect goes. Please hydrate, even if you're just, you know, going outside for a limited time. And for department heads, Edward, I'm thinking about you and your crew, Juan, thinking about you and your crew, vector control, animal control, please make sure that you're heating Timothy's and emergency management advisories on heat. Apparently, it's just extreme.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioners, no doubt, you've had the opportunity to look at the agenda, and it is robust. It's robust because we're going to be having a public hearing on our budget. In addition, we'll be considering not only budget, but we have our consent agenda, our board appointments, our regular agenda, et cetera. And so, as they say, it is my prerogative and my wish this morning to take us a little bit out of order for the convenience and for the governmental courtesy that we give other governmental entities. We have with us the Port of Corpus Christi Authority of Noises County with us today, and they're going to be giving us an update. I'd like to take them out of order, followed, that's item for the clerk, 3A2, followed by the presentation of our financial advisors, because I believe it to be in our best interest to hear this financial presentation before we go into our public hearing. But first, Edward, the one thing I never like to take out of order is public comment, and there's none, sir? Okay, and I'll, as they say, I'll give it once or twice, and Travis?
Just, yeah, would you, could we possibly do the resolution?
I was just about, sorry. Forgive me, I looked up and then remembered one more important item. Can someone just give me a number? Brent, do you have it happen handy?
It's the, it's O, present the following certificates of resolutions.
Okay, letter O?
O1 and 2, just so that they don't have to.
Right, no, no, absolutely. That was also marked here in yellow for me. So if the port would hold, I think even another government entity can appreciate what we're about to do. It's an honor to be able to bring up letter O1 and O, I'm sorry, O2, which is Senior Officer Travis Pace, Corpus Christi Police Department, recognition. And let me just set a little bit of the tone here. Never met you before, sir, until last week, I suppose. Maybe it's already been 10 days. I went because I believe that safety comes first in any organization, and it's been a joy to be able to work not only with my emergency management team, but my risk management, but with the law enforcement that protects me, all of the rest of the citizens in Noises County, and our county sheriff, Hooper, and his crew. And so when he said, "I have the perfect person," how true those words were. You conducted over three safety trainings, "active shooter" was our theme, and you did so in a manner that I've never seen before. Somehow, you combined enthusiasm for a subject matter that's so serious. You are passionate about this, but you can deliver it in a way that people can receive it and hear it and learn it and live by it. You changed my life about how I feel about safety in this courthouse. I know the first thing I'm going to do is run, but if I cannot run, I'm going to hide. And if I cannot run and I cannot hide, I might be five foot two, but you gave me the courage to fight, and I will. And I believe that through your leadership, you've empowered, how many guys, 700 employees that he touched?
950.
Factorial, because I came home and touched my family with your message, my children with your message, and this is why today it gives me great pleasure to thank Sheriff Hooper for recommending you, of course, but to say, "I'm so honored that you're here" so that I can give you this certificate of appreciation on behalf of all of us here at Commissioners' Court for your active shooter training. Officer Travis Pace, all of us have signed this. It's a very small token, but I believe you probably have saved lives that you aren't even aware of. And all I can ask is, will you please continue to come back to Noises County? There are probably 300 more that didn't get to attend, and my goal is that every Noises County employee receives active shooter training. If you're busy, please send us someone as good as you. Thank you so much. And if it's okay, I think we want to take an official picture, so we're going to come down, come on up. Yeah, we're going to move this?
Hey Judge, he's tearing up, man. My wife's probably surprised, it's the first time.
His wife is with us, and we want to thank her. I just got to meet her. She's also one of Corpus Christi's finest. She's a police officer as well, so it runs in the family. And truth is, he probably learned everything from her. At least the run and hide part.
Yes. Very good.
Give him a good side, Gina.
Thanks. Thank you all so much. I appreciate everything.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good, good. Hey, did all the commissioners get to go? If y'all, okay, so y'all have to be on the next one. It's so good.
Very good.
To be honest with you, I want you to bring the dance, I don't know, can you edit the dancing bear, like, for another meeting? We'll surprise them.
Yes.
I know. Okay. They won't remember, Travis.
Thank you very much.
That's an inside joke.
Judge, can I also, one housekeeping measure too? Based on the length of our meeting today, I'd like to move that we table executive session 4A until the next meeting, because we've got a long day, and that one can wait for another meeting. 4A, executive session.
Only thing I want to do is ask the county attorney, make sure no one traveled, nobody came in from out of town, we're good. I'll take a motion to table executive session A?
4A.
4A?
So moved.
And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Just wanted to table to the next meeting, please, if we could amend that. If someone could just make sure it gets on, thank you.
And I just want to get a little heads up, is our Employee of the Month here? In that case, I want to make sure that we do this one, because I know that Employee of the Month is such a great employee, they want to get back to work. So if I can, let me just make sure, since I'm taking it out of order, I've got to get it in my binder?
The blue one.
In the blue? Got it, got it. So for the audience and for those listening at home, we started this just a month ago. This is our second recognition of Employee of the Month, and it's really been a lot of fun, because we get to say thank you to a very special employee who's been designated for their extraordinary efforts or work. And we're all wanting to do that for our colleagues that do it every day, but this makes it very appropriate to be able to share it with the public. I think it's an incredibly valuable program, and I just, I know that the perks aren't that great lunch with me, but just know that the parking space is definitely worth it. But I'm very excited that we have announcing this month, September 2019, Esther Valboa. And I have a great certificate here in recognition of your outstanding performance, productivity, and dedicated service, but I do want to share with you that the evaluation that came in always impresses me so much, and with your indulgence, let me read. Esther Valboa is an asset to our county, our community, and the social work profession. She consistently goes above and beyond in her daily work as she manages an active caseload of clients. She does this quietly and often without recognition, because her dedication to serving the public and helping those in need is her motivation. Her position as social worker designated to, Level 2, requires that she is involved in a variety of activities both in the office and in the community. She manages shifting these gears with ease and finesse as she goes from assisting with the training of new employees to working with her clients to Coalition of the Homeless Issue Partnership. During her years with our department, Esther has enriched the lives of countless clients that seek her out for compassion and guidance. She has approved the professionalism and expertise of other social workers and caseworkers. She's a mentor, sets a positive example, and as being an outstanding employee, and of course, a dedicated social worker. Her colleagues respect her and trust her judgment. There is probably no higher honor than. She alternates her leading case management peer reviews with the department and honestly communicates effectively with management. She is a licensed social worker. She's earned her BSW, Bachelor's of Science in Social Work, from Tammuk in 2014. She is a member of the South Texas Social Worker Society, and very importantly, has been recently trained as a mental health first-aider along with several of her colleagues. She was recommended by her department head as Employee of the Month, most importantly, for her genuineness in every way she serves our community. Social Services is not even located in this county building. And so, so often, we lose sight of the people that are doing so much for the most vulnerable in our community. So it gives me great pleasure to recognize Esther Valboa today. You may live in a different building and go to work there, but you are loved here at Noises County Courthouse. Thank you so much. And Rebecca, come on up, and would you like to say something? And then we'd love to take our picture with you.
Well, I mean, I think that said it all, but when the notice came out that you were doing this, it took me about that long to think of Esther. And so, even just yesterday, she was helping to train your intern. So we love her, love having her, and she does a great job for us.
Well, thank you. And the truth is, is that I know Esther, that excellence is something that we model. So Rebecca, thank you, because I'm certain that several of her skills are being modeled I've noticed that we need maybe a bigger plaque, Michael, I don't know, I haven't seen Michael, I know, yeah, hey, Michael. by you as her leader. I've noticed we need, like, something that says, big, you know, put it like a Hollywood So thank you for setting the tone for your department.
And her social work supervisor is here, and she brought her colleagues with her today
star, Employee of the Month, so.
as well.
Okay, thank you for the indulgence of that. Please stand and be recognized. It's always a team effort. It lets them get back to doing their work for the community. I know this certificate is small, but I know she shares it with all of you that create And so now, let me call upon regular agenda item A2, and that's to receive an update such success in social services. Thank you. of the recent activities of the Port of Corpus Christi Authority of Noises County. And please come up.
Rebecca? Yeah, if y'all all want to come up.
I know, because I served in this capacity, how important it is, the oath, and within
If you guys want to come up and take a picture.
the guidelines of that oath, it says, "You shall come back and give reports."
Come on.
Thank you for being so dedicated.
You don't have to.
This is your certificate, Esther, and I look forward to having a relationship with
And it's really very nice to see my friends join us here.
you, getting to know you better.
I also want to acknowledge Nelda Olivo, Governmental Affairs Director, is here with
No, yes, maybe? Come on. If you want to. If you don't, that's okay.
us, and Sean Strawbridge, Chief Executive Officer.
Good.
I thought I saw Public Relations, there she is, Public Relations Director, but let me, yeah, that'd be great, team. Port of Corpus Christi, stand up. Oh, Danielle's here too, Lisa, oh my gosh. Hey, y'all are not in trouble, you're okay. Anyway, but we're certainly so proud to have the chairman of the Port of Corpus Christi with us, because he is a Noises County appointee, and that's Mr. Charlie Zon. Chairman Zon, welcome.
Thank you, Judge. And we brought all these people, because I know how y'all are, if you had a question, I'll bring somebody up here that can answer it.
That's good.
But we appreciate this opportunity to come and talk to you about the Port of Corpus Christi, and I think each one of you realize how extremely important the Port of Corpus Christi is, not only to this community, but to this state and to the nation. And so, we're going to give you an update on what we've been doing in the last year, what we're looking to the future. You had three appointees, myself, Mr. Bowers, and Ms. Hilliard, and so they're going to make, we're going to make three presentations to you here. I understand your agenda's long, but we've got a lot of information to give to you too, so we'll try to do it in an expeditious way. But Mr. Bowers is going to talk to you about long-range planning, Ms. Hilliard's going to talk to you about security, and I'm going to talk to you about the economics of the port.
Thank you.
Just briefly, tell you just a little bit about who we are. I think you know that we're an independent governmental agency of the state of Texas. We're a large industrial hub and gateway to global markets, and I think that's going to be important as you look at what we're looking to, not only that's happening in our part of the state right now, but what we're looking to in the future, because of close proximity to the Eagle Ford Shell and the Permian Basin oil plays. We're a landowner, a land developer, and landlord, and then we specialize in working with private industry and what we call P3s, or public-private partnerships. We're made up of seven commissioners, the three that you appoint, three appointed by the city of Corpus Christi, and one by San Patricio County. We believe that we have world-class facilities. We're the number four port in the nation by tonnage. We're the number two port in the country as far as oil exports are concerned. I believe that we'll come back and see you in a couple of years after some of these projects are a reality, and we're going to move up that ladder. But, you know, we've got some facilities that you need to be aware of. We've got a 36-mile-long, 47-foot-deep channel that goes from the Gulf of Mexico to the inner harbor here in Corpus. We've got access through the interstate highway system, which provides access for our industry partners to move their goods out of the Port of Corpus Christi all the way to Mexico and all the way up into Canada. We've got 60 miles, over 60 miles of rail in the Port of Corpus Christi where we host three Class 1 railroads, Union Pacific, Kansas City Southern, and BNSF. And we have over 28,000 acres of land that the Port of Corpus Christi owns, which is either upland or submerged lands. We have facilities for both dry and liquid bulk. You know, we've got 13 port-owned docks and 33 customer-owned docks, and I know the judge has heard me say this several times, but when I first came on the commission, we hadn't done a new dock in 13 years, and there's 13 dock, I mean, 33 years, and there's 13 docks under some phase of construction today as we speak. So at this time, I'd like to let Mr. Bowers come and talk to you about our long-range planning.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Bowers.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. First thing I want to say is the Port's Long Range Planning Committee meets once a month, and we generally review all of the court's ongoing projects, and we often post a meeting so that more than just the three of us can attend, and you're all welcome to be there. We'll have one on the 5th, I don't know if it's open this month or not, but you'd be surprised by what we have to say and what we have to do. Unlike planning for the coming tax year and the myriad, the myriad immediate problems that plague this court, the port's focus must be 10 to 20 years out for most businesses and 50 years out for some. The channel improvement project started 39 years ago and may yet take another three to five years. The cost has increased by hundreds of millions of dollars, and that's not our fault. That fault rests with the feds. We've borrowed $300 million. When I was first commissioner, we never had a debt, and we've expended more than half of that money with our latest contribution. And we also give the Army Corps $200,000 a year for personnel needs, so they can review our projects. Why is this important? Because the shale boom in the coastal, is the coastal bends' last and best chance to ensure growth and prosperity. If we had not given the pipelines reason to ship oil and natural gas liquids and natural gas to us, it would have gone to Houston. But with it coming to us, we now have the chance to develop more industries downstream. Our first responsibility was to show that we were the deepest port on the coast, and we've done that. Our second was to make sure we had the assets to handle this oil. And I think we've done that with everything we've built and with everything we've got in process. Now, the most important, and this is coming from me, the most important thing we have to do now is not overbuild. What did the old Texas oil and gas guy say? "Lord, give me one more chance, I won't screw it up." We've got enough oil in the world right now, maybe more than is necessary, and we have to make sure we don't do more than we have to. However, we're more than an oil refining and crude export port. I want to read you a list. We've exported 39 million tons of these products in the last six months, and that doesn't include over the highway and by pipeline or by rail, just by sea. 39, 29 million tons, gasoline, gas oil, fuel oil, diesel, LNG, feedstock, naphtha, jet fuel, asphalt, reformate, cumine, kerosene, condensate, aromatics, propane, butane, paraxylene, natural gasoline, xylene, benzene, alkylate, raphinate, methanol, toluene, cyclohexane, orthoxylene, bunkers, sulfurbutadiene, ethylene, and solvents. That is something no one thinks about. It's fuel oil and gasoline and crude oil, but it's much, much, much more than that. And we are a landlord. Charlie just mentioned that to you. We handle ores, wind generator parts, steel pipes, cement, grain, military equipment, project cargoes, and much more. This is something that I don't know if even most of the people in the port think about. Our non-oil and gas business is almost sufficient to support the port by itself. That's a good thing. A little diversity doesn't help, doesn't hurt. Now, look at bulk materials. We've started, and we're going to put up a slide about that, but, no, that's the Rincon, but there's bulk material stock. We're strengthening the old dock and installing a new crane. The current crane was installed in 1956 and is almost as old as I am. It served honorably, but it's woefully inadequate. By the time the new crane is installed, we will have spent about $12, $13 million there, with more to come. The new Sentinel Steel Plant has indicated, Board, that they're going to put 1 million tons of big iron through that dock every year for the next 50 years. Good deal for us. Now, oh, yeah, we also, we do a little sulfur there. We import a lot of barium, and our largest export is petroleum coat. Now, Rincon, there it is. We've stabilized 25 acres at Rincon, and we're doing the rest of the peninsula and installing three rail lines. We're going to be shipping pipe and wind parts out with the rail, and we've contracted for an expansion, and we're going to store some rail cars. We've spent tens of millions of dollars improving our rail infrastructure, and it ain't enough. Nobody here probably knows that unit trains leave the port every day with fuel oil and diesel and gasoline for Mexico. Every day, a 100-car train leaves the port of Corpus Christi. What's going to happen? The Gulf Coast Junk Ventures, Exxon, their rail requirement will be 35,000 cars a day. If SABIC announces and comes, maybe, I said it's 25,000, Exxon, they could be 30,000. The new steel mill, maybe five, who knows? 50, 70,000 to 80,000 cars a year, and don't forget, each car moves twice, once in, once out. We've got a plan for 100 years of dredge spoil disposal. We have a number of environmental projects underway. We're going to be shipping pipe and wind, wind parts out with the rail. And we've contracted for an expansion, oh, and we're going to store some rail cars. We've spent tens of millions of dollars improving our rail infrastructure, and it ain't enough. Nobody here probably knows that unit trains leave the port every day with fuel oil and diesel and gasoline for Mexico. Every day, a hundred, a hundred-car train leaves the Port of Corpus Christi. What's going to happen? The Gulf Coast Junk Ventures, Exxon, their rail requirement will be thirty-five thousand cars a day. If SABIC announces and comes, maybe, I said it's twenty-five thousand, Exxon, they could be thirty thousand. The new steel mill, maybe five, who knows? Fifty, seventy to eighty thousand cars a year. And don't forget, each car moves twice, once in, once out. We've got a plan for a hundred years of dredge spoil disposal. We have a number of environmental projects underway, some that may surprise, that will add to the quality of life in this area. That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, Catherine.
Good morning again, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My focus today will be on port security structure and functions. Chief Mylett is also here, so he's my, he has my back in case you have any real specific questions. This first slide depicts the Port of Corpus Christi's jurisdiction and facilities. So our geographic response area includes about forty-five U.S. Coast Guard regulated facilities, thirty in the Inner Harbor, and fifteen La Quinta and Harbor Island. The Port's vulnerabilities and security approach is five-dimensional, so air, land, water, subsurface, and cyber. The Port's security strategy, as you can imagine, is constantly evolving, most recently in the area of drones, which we're exploring, and of course, cybersecurity is a continuous threat that we continue to work on. In order to cover all of these areas, both land and water, the port takes a layered security approach. It's a coordinated effort between local, state, and federal agencies, as you can see from this slide, and this list is not even all-inclusive, but it certainly takes the coordination of every single one of these agencies to support our security mission. Our Port Police Department and Personnel is broken down. We have fifty-six authorized police and security positions, fifty-two of which are currently With regard to our Marine Division, it consists of three assets. So three patrol boats. All of our Port Police Officers are certified as Marine Safety Enforcement Officers through the Texas Parks and Wildlife. We have two firefighting assets, our fire barge and our fireboat, the Robert Driscoll. So the RTFC, which is the Refinery Terminal Fire Company, which is a member-based organization of career firefighters, they're trained in industrial and marine firefighting, and they man these vessels in the event of a fire. And our Port Police, who are U.S. Coast Guard certified or licensed captains, can also operate these vessels. We have some federal issues regarding port security. FEMA has a port security grant program, which is the only source of funding for security grants for ports. It's competitively awarded now amongst not only port authorities, but also public sector and private sector. Lack of federal funding is definitely an issue. We submitted an application in June, and we were awarded some funds, but haven't received an official word yet on the breakdown or the specifics of those funds. Overall, port security and staff are working tirelessly and daily to combat, you know, all security threats, land and water, and I think they're doing a tremendous job. I think we feel the same as you do, Judge. Security is a top priority, and we take it very seriously.
Thank you. You know, I've, I've learned Sheriff has, Chairman, Sheriff Hooper and I have been talking a lot about marine security, and we have two fast boats and another boat as well to make up our, our marine vessel inventory. And we stand ready at any time to be called, but we really do rely very much on you all to, to guard our submerged lands, and we appreciate that so much because it's not just appreciate, we want to memorialize it, and I think there's going to be an effort to do so because we know that the territory is large, the impact is, is, has really grown out there, and, and we need to make certain that we cooperate, you know, collaborate with our, with all of these vessels. But the fireboat is, is really key, isn't it? Isn't that, I think what people worry most about is that, that we have the proper firefighting, you know, foam, right? It's not water that they use, it's foam.
Well, and that's, that's one of our top priorities, at least in the immediate future.
That's great. That's great. Charlie?
I want to just talk to you just briefly about the, the economic impact that, that we think the Port of Corpus Christi is having, not only on our community, but as I said earlier, the nation. We do seventeen billion dollars worth of economic activity just for, for Texas. We generate over five point six billion dollars in tax revenue for taxing agencies involved with the Port of Corpus Christi. We and our industry partners produce five point six billion in personal income, and we have one point two five billion in new projects that the port has announced that we're going to do over, over the next ten years. We have fifty billion dollars worth of projects that our industry partners are, are working on today, and we probably need to, to update that slide because of the fact that, that, as we all know, we had a new steel company that announced they were coming here. The real neat, good number on this is, is that we don't have any tax revenues. We, we generate revenues for the Port of Corpus Christi through leases and through fees from our customers. We feel like the Port of Corpus Christi is successful because of four primary things. One, and I've mentioned them, I believe, we have, of course, our thirty-six mile-long ship channel, we've got multiple modal, multimodal connectivity with interstate highway system, we've got the rail system we've talked about, and then we've got the pipelines that are coming into Corpus Christi. Commissioner Bowers mentioned the fact that if, if we didn't do certain things as far as infrastructure was concerned, that a lot of this product that we're hearing about would be going to Houston. Our primary purpose at the Port of Corpus Christi is to provide the infrastructure to make our industry partners successful and to help our economic development corporations attract new industry partners into the Coastal Bend. This is just a, a real busy slide that, that shows the industries that are making capital investments in your city and in your county. And, and ten billion of that is foreign direct investments, and so that's new money coming into, into the United States. We have today, we do about eight hundred million barrels of, of crude that, that comes through the Port of Corpus Christi. There's, there's three new pipelines, one of which I think came online two weeks ago, that are going to increase that from the eight hundred million barrels a day that'll go through the Port of Corpus Christi in the next several years to three point three million barrels a day. So that's a significant economic impact, not only on Corpus Christi, but also on the, in the United States, is all, most of that product is going to either Asia or to, to Europe. And so that's going to have an economic impact. We've had some businesses or industries that, that have committed to, to come into the Corpus Christi area. We're all aware of the Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, the, the project that's, that's committed to, over in the Gregory area, it's a partnership between ExxonMobil and Saudi Arabian Basic Industries. It's going to create six hundred and seventy new jobs in our area. It's a nine point four billion-dollar project. And Judge, when we were growing up, we used to talk in millions, and now everything we talk about is in billions. But it's going to have a significant economic impact. And the thing that's really interesting about this particular job that's being created here, these are jobs in the hundred thousand dollar range. So that means those people are going to be able to live in our communities, they're going to be young people, they're going to have children that are going to our schools and have a tremendous economic impact. I know in the community I live in, in Port Aransas, that every new child that comes there helps our school district as far as the Robin Hood Plan, sending money out of the Port Aransas Independent School District. And so if we can create jobs like these with young people that have children that go into our school districts, the economic impact, again, multiplies for the Coastal Bend. Another new announcement, of course, was Steel Dynamics, a new steel plant near Centon. Again, it's a one point nine billion-dollar project. It's going to create an additional six hundred jobs, again, in that same price range. Anybody that's heard us speak in the last three or four years, and I know the judge has heard, heard it probably more than she wants to, but the number-one goal of the Port of Corpus Christi, or the number-one project of the Port of Corpus Christi, was the deepening and widening of our ship channel. Everybody that knows me knows I believe in planning, long-range planning. We started planning back in two thousand and thirteen, and, and, because we didn't have a plan when I went on the commission. And I asked John Larue, I said, why not? And he said, things evolved so fast that it'd be out of date. Well, we adopted that plan in December of thirteen, we amended it in March of fourteen, so he was right. But it does, but it does work, and this was the number-one project that we had. This was a project that started back in nineteen ninety, people way before us started on this particular project. And it's one where you heard Commissioner Bowers talk about the fact it's a four hundred million-dollar project. We have, I'm just going to use round numbers, about a third of that is a responsibility to the Port of Corpus Christi, and we have those funds available. In fact, ninety-two million of it, we've already sent to the Corps of Engineers in Galveston. I'm pleased to tell you since the last time we came to see you that we not only entered into a project partnership agreement with the Corps of Engineers to make this project a reality, but we also have let bids, and the dredge is in the water in Port Aransas, Texas today. So the first phase of this project, which is coming from offshore to, to Harbor Island to deepen that ship channel from forty-seven feet to fifty-four feet, is under construction. We expect in the next month or so to have the second phase of that project, which goes from Harbor Island to the La Quinta area and near Ingleside, bid, and hopefully start that construction of that project sometime in January or February. What this project does for us is two things. Number one, it helps us to remain competitive with other markets in the world because we will now have a fifty-four-foot channel that'll accommodate the larger vessels that are coming in. And, and I love walking in here and seeing the judge. I learned my lesson going up to see Union Pacific Railroad about having safety briefing at the start of a meeting, but safety is the number-one concept with the Port of Corpus Christi, and I'm glad you're doing it here at Newhaysis County. But the other part of this project that is so important is that not only are we going to deepen the ship channel to fifty-four foot of depth from the Gulf of Mexico all the way into the Inner Harbor, but we're going to create barge shelves, two hundred foot wide, twelve-foot-deep barge shelves to move the barges. And we do thousands of barges a year in the Port of Corpus Christi, but move those barges out into an area out of the ship channel so that we don't have those accidents that you read about periodically that happen in Houston. So safety is always a matter of concern, and that's a big part of this, this particular The next slide just talks about the funding. I, I like to tell people that the federal government has an obligation to pay their share once we get a dollar. And, and the judge knows that we worked awfully hard to get that very first dollar, and we finally got that dollar, and as a result, now the federal government is obligated to pay their share. I hope it's during my lifetime that they pay it, but anyway, we've made substantial progress there. We're fortunate with the, the leaders that we have in Washington, D.C., not only from our area, but from throughout the state. I was, I was telling somebody the other day, we, we sent a letter to the administration, and there's thirty-six congressmen in Texas, and thirty-one of them signed that letter. It didn't matter if it was a D or an R in front of their name, they signed it because it was what was best for Texas. And so they're helping us to get these funds, and, and we got a resolution, of course, out of this court, again, and out, out of various governmental agencies to help make this project a reality and, and help to bring on that economic impact that's, that's going to be a big part of what this project's going to bring. You've heard a lot about land that we own over in, near Port Aransas called Harbor Island. We own two hundred and fifty-four acres there. We've entered into an agreement with the Carlisle Group out of Washington, D.C. that are in the process of developing an oil export terminal. The Port of Corpus Christi is in the process today of doing permitting for the deepening of the channel, doing permitting for the docks that we're responsible for. And we know that the Carlisle Group and its partners are, are working on, on permitting issues also to hopefully make a, a oil export terminal, again, a reality. That was the number-two project that the, that the Port Commission had on its long-range goals. The last is one that, that you hear a lot about, and that is the, the use of offshore terminals, buoy to help transport, you know, this large amount of crude that's coming from the Permian Basin and from the Eagle Ford Shale. We've entered into an agreement or are working on an agreement with, with Phillips Sixty-Six to bring a buoy from storage that they have near Taft through Harbor Island and then to two buoys offshore of, of Matagorda Island, or San Jose Island, I'm sorry, to, again, accommodate the larger vessels that are coming into the Gulf of Mexico to move this crude. The difference that you're seeing is in, in the, the average vessel that you see, if you come over and sit on my porch and drink a glass of wine, is a thousand barrel, I mean, a million barrel vessel that's transporting crude, the, the very large crude carriers that, that we're looking to build, work with Carlisle for, for an onshore terminal, and people like Phillips Sixty-Six are looking to do an offshore terminal, hold in excess of two million barrels of, of oil. So the, the financial savings to them on having, being able to transport larger amounts of crude make a difference. And the reason that we're happy about it is they're coming across port property in order to lay that line into the Gulf of Mexico. And as I told you, we make our revenue two ways, one by leasing and one by charging fees for people that take product across our bulkheads. So we believe that this is going to be good for Phillips Sixty-Six, it's going to be good for the nation, it's going to be good for the port. I want to tell you on behalf of the three of us that, that, that you've chosen to, to represent you on the, on the Port Commission for the Port of Corpus Christi. We're honored. We feel like that you've given us an important job, an important task, and, and we feel like that you have good representation. We, I feel like as Chairman of the Port Commission, that we have an outstanding group of people that are representing the citizens of South Texas. I, I miss my friend, the judge, sitting behind, beside me, but I like the position she's in now, and I want to thank you all for sending Catherine to me. I had never met Ms. Hilliard before. She's doing an outstanding job, and I know this is early because it's only August, and you don't consider this in December, but I hope you'll favorably consider her reappointment in December. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and, and you all did a great job. And there's, as you said, there's so much to say, but I just also, when I made a few notes, just made it commend you, just because we're, people are watching at home, and I think it's important to note, the Port of Corpus Christi, under your leadership, has dedicated two percent of operating revenues back to this community through Promotional Development Fund, which is statutorily authorized by our state. I'm real proud of that, and people just, we forget when somebody's just always there for you. Kind of reminds me of Whataburger and HEB, you know, they're just always there, and they're always, well, you know, Whataburger, HEB, and the Port of Corpus Christi. It's like as American as it gets because the truth is, is that you guys are always on the name of everything that matters, and that's because of that dedication of that Promotional and Development Fund. And I noticed you have your team, and so I want to acknowledge Danielle Hale because we still use the Danielle Hale model around here for emergency management, and we still call Danielle Hale when we have emergency management questions. So we're still living off the goodwill, although you did steal her from, from the county, as I understand it.
Judge Neil gave permission to do it.
The truth is, we're doing just fine here, but it's nice to know that we can collaborate on emergency management issues. And then Jeff Pollock's here with your planning department, and I want everyone to know that the county's currently planning our, our right-of-way interests. And I can't tell you how invaluable it is for me to have the port as a resource as we contemplate what happens next when that bridge comes down. And of course, we wouldn't have that bridge, we wouldn't have that amazing iconic architectural feat, as great as the Louvre, in my opinion, come to us if it were not for the Port of Corpus Christi. That'll be in my book in about five years, I'll tell you the whole story. And, but thanks to the port, it's a good one, but thanks to the port, that bridge will be a reality, and, and, but, but because of that, we've got to contemplate right-of-way. And your planning department is not just working with the county, it's working with the city, it's working with the RTA, the MPO, and, and, and other counties, you know, San Patricio County. So, and let's see. And then the other thing I wanted to say is that Sarah Garza's not here, but Rosie and I have worked really hard about communicating how important it is to us that we're a green port. That means something. It means that we partner with, as an environmental precept. And so I want to thank you for keeping that standard of excellence up. People think because we're talking crude oil, LNG, refined products, that we can't be green. We can be green, we are green, and we lead the ports in the world as one of the first to adopt those international standards. I'm real proud of that. And of course, I now sit on Coastal Bend Bay's nest areas in a different capacity. And again, if it were not for our partnerships, county, city, port, Coastal Bend wouldn't be able to mitigate all the projects. And I know that Port Aransas is your home for, I won't make you say how many years.
Forty-nine years.
Forty-nine years. I'll start crying if I even think about it. I know how much you love it, and I'm right there with you. And I want the people to know that this judge is with you, with our community, and the reason that we're about to have this public hearing about our budget going up eight percent in revenues is due, not a hundred percent, but the vast majority because of the in revenues is due, not a hundred percent, but the vast majority because of the energy renaissance and growth and the leadership of the Port of Corpus Christi. I did not plan this because originally the hearings were not scheduled for today, but because of a change, your presentation fell on our last public hearing. But make no mistake, when you see eight percent growth, and our financial advisors are here, and they can attest to this, that is a tremendous amount of growth. It is what's saving us, and it's what allows me, as the county judge, to propose a lower tax rate than last year. And from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank the staff that you represent as the chairman of the Port of Corpus Christi. Thank you for doing that for our community, Charlie.
I want to point one thing out that you said, Judge, and that was in Commissioner Hilliard's presentation. I'm not sure people realize that when I went on the Port Commission we've had, and Brent and I've talked about this, we had competitive law enforcement. We had this law enforcement knew a fact, this law enforcement knew a fact, they wouldn't talk to each other, so you couldn't solve anything. We fixed that. We put a partnership together, as she showed on that slide, and we feel like we've done the same thing with the county governments, with the municipal governments, with the economic development corporations, and I think the beneficiaries of that are the people of the Coastal Bend. So, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent presentation. Commissioners, I think Tyner has a remark, but I can see it coming, but I do want to ask Tyner if they have any questions, and I think Commissioner Vaughn does, and so I'll call on her. And then Tyner, you'll be next.
Thank you. First off, thank you, all of you, for coming today. You make such a great contribution to not only our city and county, but to the region, so thank you. And I am very pleased with Catherine Hilliard. Not only is she pretty, but she's intelligent, and it's nice to see her if they're amongst all those men. Can I ask Sean Strawbridge a question?
Sure.
Can I do that? I'm sure you can answer it, but I'd just really like to ask him this.
That's why I brought him up.
I know it, I know it, that was a smart move. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge.
As you know, we had a town hall meeting, because you were there, last week at Cal Allen, due to the crude storage tanks. The most important thing that I do in my precinct is I represent my constituents, and I've always been transparent and honest, that's one of the things that I stand on, and government sometime isn't. So, we met out there, and these crude storage tanks snuck in. Of course, all of these people are very upset, and I was too, the judge was. So, we're trying to help them, and I believe that Epic has a good heart, and they want to make right what they've done, but unfortunately, I think sometimes we're gonna forgive, do it and forgive later, and so they were wrong in what they did. But my question to you, because this came up in the meeting, because they accused us of knowing that they were going in, we did not know, but I can understand why they would think that government knew. So, I want to ask you publicly, did the port know that they were gonna put those storage crude tanks in?
Well, Commissioner, we knew that Epic was coming.
Mm-hmm.
They certainly have a facility that they're constructing on the Corpus Christi ship channel in the inner harbor. In fact, they've leased the, what's known as the Interstate Grain Facility, right next door to the piece of property that they bought, and that is where they are planning on loading crude oil in the interim, but ultimately, with the fractionator that they're building in Robstown, that's where they will load their natural gas liquids, once the fractionator's done. With respect to the tanks that you're referencing, because that's not on port property, we didn't have any visibility to that. Should we have? Probably, and I'll take the, I'll take that on. You know, going forward, if there are investments that are being made in and around the Corpus Christi ship channel that have some appurtenances that are in the region, our people should probably know what the entire infrastructure portfolio looks like for these customers. And the reason for that is, of course, we take stewardship and our environmental responsibility very seriously. And this commission that I serve at the pleasure of, of which Judge Canales was on that commission when we adopted an environmental policy that very clearly states, "We will not undertake any operation or any development unless all of the following precepts are taken into consideration," and that's air quality, water quality, soils and sediments quality, habitat preservation and restoration, and environmental sustainability and stewardship. And that includes impacts on the community. So, a long answer to a short question, we did not know that development. I had not been out there until this issue popped up on my radar just that very week, and certainly it's something that was a lesson learned for us. Here's the good news about the Epic folks. Phil Maisy, their CEO, who was out at that event, and their guys, very clearly said, "Hey, we got this wrong." They didn't try and hide it, they didn't try and make excuses, they said, "Yeah, we get this one wrong, and we're gonna do what we can to fix it." I think that's a good first start. And a good example of that is Interstate Grain, right next door, the facility that they've leased. Interstate Grain has exited the grain market because of the tariffs and the impact on grain. Our grain volumes are down over sixty-five percent this year alone, and that has a big impact on the South Texas growers. Nuasis County is one of the largest, if not the largest sorghum producer in the entire country, from a per-acre standpoint. So, it's a very important constituency that's been here a long time. Many of these are family-owned businesses, and the fact that we have one of two grain elevators at the port shutting down has a huge impact on this constituency. So, I was approached by the Texas Farm Bureau and by the Sorghum Producers Association and said, "Can the port help?" And of course, our answer is, "We're gonna help in any way that we possibly can." First thing we did is we went to Epic and said, "Hey, what are your plans for this facility?" And they said, "We're not gonna do anything with these grain elevators, so if there is something the port wants to do, they're happy to accommodate us." So, I think that's a good first step for Epic in recognizing that that's not in their business at all, but they recognize the impact to this community, they want to be good stewards and good corporate citizens in this community, and that's perhaps one example of how they're gonna try and do that. And we met with them, they met with the growers, they seemed to be really eager and interested in working with the growers and certainly working with the port. That said, I hope they do take corrective action in their development out there in your district, because I was at that meeting, and very clearly, you've got some constituents who are rightly so concerned.
As they should be. I appreciate you bringing up Interstate, because I met with some farmers last week, and that was one of their concerns, because we're not just an industrial city, we're a farming community, and we don't want to continue to lose land. All across the nation, they're losing about an acre a minute, I think, is what they said. So, I appreciate you being candid and honest, and we did not know, so I appreciate, the public needs to hear that you did not know. So, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioners, I think Tyner has a good recommendation.
Judge, I would recommend that y'all go ahead and take care of 3A8, which is the interlocal with the port, since they're all here.
And, and I've got...
Second.
Okay, we've got, and all those in favor of taking up that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In that case, let's discuss and consider the approval of the interlocal agreement, and has everyone had a chance to review that? If the port folks would just stay here in case there are any questions, we would appreciate it. This interlocal, this interlocal agreement, Commissioners, is for the purposes of the port, continuing to provide securities in the services for our submerged lands in Nuasis County. And, you know, Sean, both of this predates you and I, they've been doing this for decades. But, you know, like anything, with growth comes challenges, and one of the things I've been committed to doing since I've gotten here is to update our records, make sure that all our policies are current, and when I couldn't really find a document, I wanted to make certain that we created one and memorialized it, spoke with Sheriff Hooper, kinda looked at the terrain. He feels very confident that if our services at Nuasis County were needed, he's got those two fast boats to handle any issues. But those structures are over submerged lands in La Quinta Channel that belong to Nuasis County, that have always belonged to Nuasis County, and this interlocal just memorializes it, as I understand it. There is an impact, Commissioners, and I asked Lauda to kind of review this and prepare this document for your review, and I would like a motion at this time, and then we can have discussion. Do I hear a motion to approve this interlocal in a second?
Second.
And now, if there's any discussion or questions, there is a financial impact of $12,000 per year. I think that was reached because we asked for guidance, and the guidance that was given was that that was, the $1,000 a month is an appropriate service payment or consideration, commensurate with what Porter Anzis Marina pays.
Judge, I think it's important, as you touched on, to note that this is just simply putting it in writing, that's what's been going on for many, many years, and I think that's a real important point in all this, that the board has been doing this, we appreciate that, and this is just putting something in writing that has gone on for a long, long time.
That's right. You know, the legal eagle, I guess, in my background makes it such that I prefer a document, but there's no doubt that this arrangement has been made, but I, Sean, do you, do you want to throw anything else in there? Is the interlocal satisfactory to you, and as we refer to him as lawyer welder?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
And to your point, these are services, these marine security services, marine patrol, marine policing services, are services that the Port of Corpus Christi has been providing for decades. And as we see more growth, based on what you heard earlier today from some of our Commissioners, that growth, with that growth comes more responsibility. While our area of responsibility encompasses over twenty-eight thousand acres, we're seeing more vessel traffic, we're certainly seeing different commodity segments, as you heard from Commissioner Bowers, and that certainly puts a tax on our apparatus, and we are in the throes of adding equipment, adding personnel to our security mandate, not only on policing, but certainly fire, and certainly any emergency management. We just, we've got more to protect, and so we've got more to do. And I think having these interlocal agreements, there has been for a long time, what I would call gentleman's agreements, or ladies' agreements, or handshake.
No, they were gentlemen's.
But...
Not anymore.
That's right. Leave it to a lady to put it down in writing. I think that's appropriate. I think we certainly don't want there to be any ambiguity about the services that we're providing to this community, and certainly to this county, of which we are in Nuasis County Navigation District number one.
That's right, and you know, I've learned so much through this process. You know, I learned that the city of Corpus Christi has a rapid-force team, they also have a dive team, an underwater inspection dive team, and so the truth is, is that there are so many incredible services that are handled all the time, but we don't memorialize them, and therefore, the next generation, when we hand off the baton, a different governmental entities, there's no framework, there's no reference. And so, I remember when I spoke with Sheriff Hooper, he said, "I remember a day when, you know, there were boats in the marina, you know, going everywhere." And so, sometimes when we don't have that historical knowledge, these documents will outlive us, and that's why we need them. And so, I really appreciate it, and I hope that if there are any other types of interlocals that you think are valuable, that you'll see value in coming to us and our county attorney and seeking those out.
Certainly Sheriff Hooper and Chief Malet go way back, and from our standpoint, you saw from the one slide, this is a layered approach. We've gotta make sure that we are collaborating and cooperating with all agencies, federal, state, and certainly local. So, I think you may see in the future more what we would call MOU for services with other agencies that can perhaps augment our services, and certainly, there are services that we may be able to provide that can augment theirs.
And just to be clear, if there were any fire on any of those submerged structures on our submerged lands, the port would respond with their fireboat, and the RTFC would respond, regardless of whether they're a member or not.
That's correct, because right now, unlike airports, where the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration mandates what type of first response capability needs to exist, at seaports in this country, there is no similar mandate, so every seaport is left to their own devices. At the Port of Houston, for example, they have their own fire department. We don't have that, we have the RTFC, we don't want to recreate the will, the RTFC is a fine bunch of well-trained women and men, trained in hydrocarbon firefighting, but what we do need is more equipment. We're gonna need more fireboats, we're gonna need bigger platforms than what we have. So, we're gonna need to be continuing to make those investments, and that's really what the value of the port is. The fees that we charge our customers for the services that we provide, this is one of the services that we provide, is waterside firefighting capability, and in the absence of that, there is nobody that has that mandate. And so, you know, the ball is lying on the ground, so to speak, and that's problematic. So, the port taking a leadership role and having the support of our security committee, and certainly the commission, has been helpful.
Thank you. After discussion, if there's no further questions, I'll call the question. All those in favor of this interlocal agreement, as provided in your packet, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Post same sign. Okay.
Judge, the next item has the port on it as well, I don't...
Yes.
It's the LEPC item.
Okay, thank you, Tyner, for keeping us organized here. This is the discuss and consider approval of an agreement between the city of Corpus Christi, the port authority, and Nuasis County relating to the Nuasis County Local Emergency Planning Committee partnership. Here to present is Kathy Arblantner, Emergency Management Deputy Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The LEPC planning committee consists of one FTE and one part-time FTE, and the budget is $120,000 a year. This is a renewal of an existing agreement. The Port of Corpus Christi, city of Corpus Christi, and Nuasis County support the budget. The Port of Corpus Christi pays as an industrial partner. Corpus Christi pays ten, twenty thousand a year, and Nuasis County pays ten. We review this every five years, and the LEPC has a huge responsibility. They oversee chemical emergencies, they handle the Tier Two hazardous chemical industry, submits annual reports to the LEPC. They provide awareness to our community, they manage through the city versus the county, they sit in the fire department, but they represent Nuasis County, as they did last night at the...
Yes, our town hall.
Town hall meeting.
Judge, I'd move approval, this is a must.
And they also do reverse alert. And one last thing before we vote, they have put a shelter-in-place kit in every Nuasis County school classroom, and they are still working on doing that for Corpus Christi, so the county was first.
Good stuff.
Top-three LEPC in the state. Deer Park is first, Beaumont is second, and Corpus Christi is third.
That's great, that's great. And of course, I believe Chief Rocha is our LEPC chair, is that correct? Is that correct, Director Malet? Yeah, Chief Rocha, and Dave Cave from Sitco is also very involved and keeps us... Danielle Hale, I believe you're on it? So, this is, this is great. I think I heard a motion in a second, and the only reason you're not hearing discussion is because we are big fans, Kathy, we are big fans. And all those in favor of...
Aye.
...of approving this agreement signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I am absolutely, go back to work, everybody.
Could you take that Doug Allison guy with you?
Yeah, take him. Thank you. Really appreciate all of you. Let me see what that number is. As they exit, I don't want you to think we do this all the time, where we're zigzagging, but I will tell you that there is a method to this madness, and that is, is that when we go into budget, the public hearing first, and then the approval, it really does help if you keep the continuity. And so, I think what I'd like to do at this time is call for, we've got one more resolution proclamation, and, and, excuse me, under letter N, we have an adoption for the America's National Park System. I'd like to do that, Tyner, followed by the board appointments, and then bring Noe up, because this is gonna make for much better fluidity. Okay? And we'll get the minutes in as well.
And Judge, we have, from Austin, Chad Wilbanks is here.
Yes.
He arrived yesterday, and I think he may want to stand with me.
Yes, welcome, Chad. I know you had a tough weather day, but I was glad to see you last night, thanks for stopping by, and more importantly, thank you for being here.
Whereas America's National Park System is a living testament to our citizens' valor, our nation's hardships, our victories, and our traditions as Americans, and has been called America's Best Idea. Whereas the National Park System preserves the diversity, culture, and heritage of all Americans, and serves as a living classroom for future generations. Whereas in 2018, the National Park Service celebrated its centennial and currently manages four-hundred-and-nineteen nationally significant sites and an invaluable collection of more than seventy-five thousand natural and cultural assets that span eighty-five million acres across all fifty states, District of Columbia, and several U.S. territories. Whereas the National Park Service's mission to conserve the scenery and the natural and historic objects and the wildlife therein, and to provide for the enjoyment of the same in such manner and by such means... in such manner and by such means as will leave them unimpaired for the enjoyment of future generations. Whereas in 2018, the National Park System had more than 318 million visits. National Parks in Texas had 5.3 million park visitors. Padre Island National Seashore had 616,000 visitors. Whereas in 2018, National Park Service estimates indicate that park visitors spent more than $20.2 billion at the sites, and in the states and local communities adjacent to national parks, 303 million in Texas and 27 million in localities close to Padre Island National Seashore. Whereas the National Park Service has the obligation to preserve our nation's history, promote access to national parks for all citizens, stimulate revenues to sustain itself in nearby communities, educate the public about America's natural, cultural, and historical resources, and provide safe facilities and environments to enjoy these resources. Whereas in 2018, the National Park Service estimated a deferred maintenance backlog of nearly $12 billion, including nearly $8 million in Padre Island National Seashore, which includes repairs to aging historical structures, trails, sewers, drainage, thousands of miles of roads, bridges, tunnels, and other vital infrastructure. Excuse me, and other vital infrastructure. Whereas it is the responsibility of Congress to maintain America's national parks to ensure our natural places and our history is preserved and documented for future generations, and for gateway communities such as Nuasis County that rely on the direct and indirect economic benefits and tourism generated by visits to national park sites. Now therefore be it resolved that the County of Nuasis, Texas strongly encourages Congress to create a reliable, predictable stream of resources to address deferred maintenance needs in America's national park system.
Thank you so much. Well, Chad, welcome, and we welcome your comments. What can we say? So many of us just don't understand, we have a national park in our backyard. How many times do we say, "Where are we going to go on vacation?", and people say, "I want to go to Yellowstone", or "I want to go to the..." You know, they name all the ones that they know, but they forget that in our backyard, we have the most amazing national park in Padre Island National Seashore. And I just wish it had just been one mile over, it would have been in our county, not in Clayburg. But it's so close, and we are landowners, our county are landowners adjacent to this national park. So we feel like we're guardians along with the National Park Service. So we're honored to do this. You might explain to everybody why you thought it was important that we do this type of resolution.
Absolutely, Judge and Commissioners. Thanks for entertaining this resolution. So we have 13 national parks in the state of Texas. We've generated over roughly, you know, $4.2 billion in the state in tourism dollar revenue. But what's important about Nuasis County is that it serves as a gateway community to Padre Island National Seashore that was founded in 1962. It serves as the longest stretch of undeveloped barrier island in the world. It's something pretty significant. So what we're trying to do right now, Congress has done a fairly good job over the past three sessions of putting money towards the maintenance of our national parks. What they haven't done a very good job is making sure that we are funding all the repairs that are needed. So you think of, you know, Big Ben and look at the Grand Canyon, you know, there's three wastewater plants in Grand Canyon, so they put Band-Aids on these wastewater pipes to fix it. You look at aging structures, the Texas White House and Johnson City has been closed for a year because going into the building is about to fall. And so when we look at all these, we've made a big push for Congress to move forward on this. And you think of this air of politics today, it is a purely bipartisan piece of legislation. There's 306 cosponsors in the House on this bill, there's 40 senators on the Senate version, and everything that we can do to keep pushing the needle a little bit with Speaker Pelosi and Majority Leader McConnell helps. As we've done a poll through Futureable Trust, a national think tank, one of the largest think tanks in the country, 82% of Americans support our national parks and support Congress funding this. And that number's almost unheard of these days. And so with counties like yours moving forward and encouraging members of Congress to keep jumping on as cosponsor, I think we'll end up having great success. So thank you.
So it was important to do this resolution because we're adjacent to this national park, and of course, everybody that goes to the national park has to go right through the island, right, right through Nuasis County. And so because we do have this nexus, this resolution will help send a message that we support our national park and to please do everything they can to appropriate funds for its continued maintenance so it can stay beloved. And I'm just very happy to do this, and I would like a motion, please, to approve this resolution. And a second? Okay, we got a second on Brent, Commissioner Chesney. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post same sign. It's great to do this for you.
I want to say one thing, and I want to really thank the Rangers out there at the National Seashore, because for 10 years, you know, they really were involved in the community, you know, taking the youth out there, and I know that they collected billions of tons of trash every year and cleaning out those seaweeds and everything else. And they've partnered a lot with some of the courts for the youth and Boy Scouts to clean out that. And I just want to say, I want to commend them for keeping that part of our National Seashore for us clean and always involving the community. I really want to thank them for that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. They do a fantastic job.
They really do. And if you've never been out to the seashore on a foggy morning, the next time it's foggy and it's a weekend and you don't know what to do, drive out there and experience something like you've never seen before. And inside, there's a very small, but very powerful, historical, documented graphic about the history of our island. And it actually gets it almost perfectly right, but it starts with the Karankuas and, you know, brings us to the modern-day Captain Dunn and McCambeau. And somewhere in the middle, there's a story about a priest, and I know a lot about this priest because that was part of my ancestry. And just for fun, I've been dying to tell you this, it says he was Portuguese. We're not Portuguese. We were Spaniards. And I got to get that fixed, so maybe you can help me figure that out. I've got all the ancestry, all the lineage. It says that the Baie was a Portuguese priest, and I walked in there with Doug one day, I said, "I had no idea I was Portuguese." But I know I'm not Portuguese. And that is actually a small error there in the graph. An amazing pictorial. And again, I just think that we need to do a better job in Nuasis County of promoting it. And so please continue to be vigilant with us about what it is that we can do. My wish for this court is to send our resolution to not just Congressman Cloud, but to our entire South Texas delegation. And Teddy Roosevelt, of course, who was the champion of parks, Senator Lucio, who actually does represent Clayburg County, and Senator Lucio is a big fan of Teddy Roosevelt. And he always says, "People don't care about how much you know, they want to know how much you care." So in Senator Lucio's name, who gave me this gavel, I want to say that I think we did something great for the people that care today. So thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Take that resolution back. Send it out. Thanks. Okay. So I think I got them all, but I'm just doing a double check. Let's go ahead, Commissioners, and approve the minutes for the court's clerk. She has minutes posted for you August 7th and the 14th. You've had a chance to review. Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post same sign. Okay, we're going to take up letter P, and then we're going to go straight into budget and not stop till we drop. Judge?
On the park resolution, I don't know if...
Did I not vote?
Yeah, I don't know if it was...
Voted. Did I vote?
You did.
I did. Okay, thank you. Thank you for checking on us, though. Would it be possible to table Nuasis County Animal Control Advisory Committee till the next one? I will take that as a motion to table, and I'll look for a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post same sign. I'll take up the Nuasis County Special Task Unit of Adult Protective Services. That's item number two, Tyner. If you would guide us. I've got to turn my tabs here.
Let me find it here, Judge.
Well, I understand it's David Ramos, Lisa Divin, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right, correct me if I'm... Lisa Brown, and Mark Hendricks, who also placed a letter of interest.
Are they for reappointments, or are there new?
Well, Lisa Brown, Mark Hendricks, and David Ramos are all expiring, and all three of them have served well in this task unit, which meets quarterly, and the terms are only for one year. You know how we've kind of gone, we've decided that we really need overhaul, well, this is kind of one of these examples. These are people, I know Mark very well, and anyway, I think that their letters are... Yes, I think their letters are sufficient.
Are the rest of them not our appointments? Like, there's still, there's other ones that are expiring in September also.
That's correct.
Yeah, these are the only ones that submitted letters of interest.
Correct. And I'm...
They'd be vacant.
That's correct, Brent, but we're going to work with...
Because I know Detective Torres pretty well.
Well, he's all... Oh, no, I'm sorry, it was David Ramos. So what I'd like to do is take up the remaining vacancies at our next meeting. Is that all right?
Well, I would maybe check with those three.
Well, remember, yeah, because the interest is, is that, remember, we had a board meeting to try to solve this problem of everybody...
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And our office will call Mark Hendricks, David Ramos, and Lisa Brown, and let them know that we have reappointed them, and then we will contact the others, Commissioners, find out if their interest is to continue to serve, and if not, bring those vacancies back to you at our next regular meeting. At this time, I'm going to move on to Nuasis County Hospital District Board of Managers, number three.
Judge, if I may interject.
Absolutely.
This morning, I was notified by Information Technology that an applicant named Mary Margaret Ara, A-R-A, there was an application in the queue, but it was a day late. And so the electronic signature was a day after the deadline, just for your information.
Very appreciative of the information. Commissioners, for this board, these are, we do have new applicants, and we have also three incumbents. Let me read the list out to you first. Let me also remind you that these are three-year terms, and these are, we have three expirations for September 2019, which makes it very important that we name these today. Currently, new applications are John B. Martinez, Pamela Brower, Dr. Vishnu Reddy, and Belinda Flores. Submitting letters of interest were current members Claude C. Jennings, Robert N. Corrigan, and Rodney Hart. And all of you should have been provided with plenty of time, all of the applications, resumes, CVs, that were attached, not only in your notebook, but that were available online. If you'll turn to your notebook, you'll see these are staggered terms. So this hospital district actually has sort of the profile that one would want, is that there's terms expiring in '19, and '20, and '21. So having said that, you know how important this District Board of Managers is. They're responsible for the operation of our interesting hospital system, which is a quasi-public-private, we're joined by Johnny Hip, so he's smiling back there at my characterization of our hospital system. I think he might agree, I'm not sure. But our primary mission is the most important, which is to provide quality preventive medical hospital emergency care to the indigent and needy sick of Nuasis County, and to the other county residents with the ability to pay. So this seven-member board is incredibly important. It's created and authorized by the Health and Safety Code. It runs independently. Later in the budget, we'll be talking about their budget, approval, their tax rate, and we'll get more information from Mr. Hip. But these three-year staggered terms, three of them need to be decided today. And I will yield to the court, but I would like to hear a motion for the, for one of the members to be replaced, I will say that, or to be reappointed, whatever is the will of the court. The first one, I'm taking it not in any particular order, but just as it comes in place, the place is number three.
Judge, could we maybe just... Yeah, could we just maybe get your whiteboard out, and we all just vote for three people, and whoever, would that, I mean...
I have my whiteboard, but yeah, we could do that.
Or somebody could just keep it. I think it's going to get a little confusing. There's going to be a little, I think, a mixed bag today.
That's fine. I do want to, I do want to say something while we're getting the whiteboard, and that is, is that my desire was to have boards and commissions, applications that look just like this. This is the dream, right here, for an elected official, and I hope the court. And that is, it's a lot of applications, they're all incredibly qualified, and they're very diverse. And that was my hope and wish, that we would see boards be reflective of our community. Having said that, please let me preempt, no matter what the selections come out today, the service that has been given by the individuals on this board are unparalleled. It's just very rare that you see such service from individuals who have lasted almost two decades and in one particular arena. It means that they have a tremendous interest in that arena, tremendous dedication, and I wanted to acknowledge all the members, of course, but particularly the three who submitted letters of interest to return.
Judge, I make a motion that we appoint Reddy, Flores, and Martinez?
Do we want to, who's going to be my lauda? Could you help me keep it? Well, we were going to wait for the... It's coming. He just wants...
Motion second, Judge.
You don't want to, why would we do that? Why wouldn't we just vote like we normally do?
We never vote individually, we just put emotions out there. I mean, I think that we can and should, but let's not nitpick. I can give you plenty of examples of times we've made appointments or not, that we have not gone name by name or voted on a tally. We've never, ever, in the two and a half years I've been here...
Yes, we have to.
Pulled up a board.
But we have voted, we have absolutely voted on it.
Well, let me try to create a little order here. The whiteboard's good for me for the budget, so I'm glad it's being rolled in. And look, all I'm really trying to do is to systematically hear motions, and then we'll have the opportunity to vote on them. But as you know, we have three vacancies, so just in the interest of keeping it orderly, I don't mind writing it on the board, but I will take your motion. But I have to be honest with you, I couldn't quite hear it perfectly. Would you mind repeating it for me?
Motion to appoint Reddy, Flores, and Martinez.
Oh, I see, you have a slate. Okay. So you have a slate that is, if you wouldn't mind, just say their whole names.
Vish, Dr. Vish, Vishnu Reddy, Bell Flores, and John Martinez.
Okay. And...
Judge, I'd like to vote for one of them, and I can't vote for the other two, so if he wants to take away my right to do that...
Okay.
He certainly has made that motion, and that's okay. I would just like to vote individually, because I'd like to vote for one of those, and I'd like to vote for two others.
That's fine, you can make a motion second, you're right, you've got a motion and second.
Okay.
If you don't want to give everybody a right to vote for who they want to vote for...
Perfectly, Robert rules of order, we're operating...
I just said you can do it, I just don't agree with...
Don't characterize it as I'm taking your right to win.
Okay.
It's a discussion, and yes, you are, but it's your motion, and if you win, you get to win. I'm okay with that. But let's call it like it is. I want to vote individually on everyone, you don't. If you win your motion, I get outvoted, I'm okay with that. Don't get mad at me. I just don't agree with, I just don't agree with...
Judge, can I make a motion? Maybe I can stop this. Not a motion, I just want to make a statement. You know, I see that we're making a motion, you have that right to do that, John, everybody does, for all new people. I think if you have people that have served on this board and they've done nothing wrong, why would you want to replace them? And I don't know of any reason that any of these should be replaced. I've not heard anything, and maybe I'm not, maybe I'm out of the loop, and nobody's telling me that, but I just don't like replacing people if they have done nothing wrong, and they have served for a long time, and there is no term limit. Just wanted to get that out there. I appreciate that. And listen, I want to make sure that, as everyone knows, my court, this courtroom that I preside over, and I'm going to, hang on, guys, this court that I preside over, I really do appreciate diversity of thought, and I want to make sure we hear from all Commissioners. But we do have a motion and a second, and as long as I'm keeping, in keeping with everything that I know of, I'm... I'm, I'm obligated to call the question.
Absolutely.
So having said that, this is a ripe time for more discussion. I just want to comment on the slate because it is an excellent one. And Bell Flores is an RN with a behavioral health background. Dr. Vish Reddy, I believe you serve as the Chief Hospitalist at CCMC for, in, in the intern. Is, is your specialty internship? Internal medicine? I'm trying to remember from, from the CV. And the third was John Martinez, who's a former county court at law judge and is actually here as well with us and and also has been very active in, well, there was, I'm sure, a lot of mental health discussion with regards to your courtroom. At any rate, I do want to address the fact, as I said earlier, that I do believe that the people that are serving in place three, place four and place five are not only good people and honorable, honorable people, but they've been great public servants. But I do believe that they cumulatively, I think, have over 45 years of service on this board. And I think it's okay to have a, a new direction for a new vision and a new time. And I'm okay with that. And I really appreciate, as I said, the unbelievable resumes. I also want to commend someone whose name we haven't mentioned, which was Pamela Brower. I mean, what an amazing resume she brings to the table as well. Is Pamela here with us today? Okay. I want to reach out to her later because I'd like to, you know, find out more about her willingness to serve as, as there are seven places on this hospital district board. And perhaps her opportunity lies in the future.
Judge, just as a matter of discussion, since it's quite obviously, I'm going to get outvoted on this. I want to, but I want for the record and I want in the minutes, that I, I don't believe this is a proper way to do it. That I would have voted for some on this slate, but because of the way Mr. Morris is making his motion and he has every right to do it, I think it's, I think it's inappropriate. And I have to vote no based on the way he's made the motion, not based on the applicants that are involved. I think the board members who have served have done an outstanding job. They have served at the pleasure of this commission for many, many years. There is nothing in place that, that terms them off. And I don't, I don't think there's any reason to, to do a mass kickoff either. But I get it. It's the will of court. It's not personal. I'm not mad about it. I'm just stating for the record and I want it in the minutes. That, the, that, that's why I'm doing what I'm doing because I think the three that we're fixing to put on, obviously, because obviously, as Carolyn said, I'm out of the loop too. Then the three that are fixing to be on are outstanding. But I'm, I'm voting no because of the process, not because of the applicants. And I want that.
Duly noted. Duly noted.
Thank you.
And I also want to mention that I'll be reaching out to everybody today. But I do want you to know that the, the court has engaged in an amazing collaboration with the hospital district on mental health and behavioral health. And if, if the folks that we're serving continue to have an interest in our health system and behavioral health in particular, I'm going to welcome them on this unbelievably new and creative initiative that we have with the Meadows Policy Institute. And I'm going to reach out to Johnny later about that opportunity. In other words, don't stop serving. Come on board. It may have a different name, but it still has an amazing high purpose. So with that, plenty of discussion, nothing further. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The slate again is Flores, Reddy and Martinez. And I'll take.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Chesney?
Nay.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Nay.
Record reflects. I'll reach out to the three. I want to acknowledge, because I see him here and I already called on him. Dr. Reddy, if everybody would just, you know, it's nice to know people. Dr. Vishnu Reddy. I'm, I'm just excited to have a medical professional on the board in, as an MD. I think all the work that we do is, is directed at healthcare, but so often we need the expertise of, of a doctor. I'm really excited to have your service. And I know your personality is, is one of, you're just very thoughtful and you're very kind and compassionate, but you're also a businessman. And so I think you're going to bring an amazing perspective to this and a diversity to this board. If you wouldn't mind, just because of, we're on video, if you wouldn't mind approaching Dr. Reddy.
Thank you very much, Commissioners and Judge. I'm Vishnu Reddy. I'm a doctor in the local community and been here long enough. I really appreciate the vision of the board here today and the court that you want to include a healthcare professional as well, along with an RN. It's very exciting for us. This has been one of the longings of the healthcare community here that a doctor or a nurse or a healthcare provider has not been included when we make these important decisions about healthcare. So I hope that after my term is over, there will still be another doctor replacing me. And after Bell Flores' term is over and RN is replacing her. And of course, Judge Martinez, John Martinez is, is somebody that we respect very much. And I'm very excited to be a part of this board as well with the new, as new included team. But thanks, everybody. And we definitely will not let you down. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And no, no pressure, John, but you are here in the audience. I see you. If you wanted just to acknowledge John, John Martinez. Once a judge, always a judge, just like Judge Jag over here. I'm Judge Canales and he's Judge Jag.
Thank you, Judge Canales. Commissioners, I, like Dr. Reddy, really do appreciate the opportunity to serve on this board. As you mentioned, as a county court at law judge, not only did we see a lot of mental health issues with the people that came in as defendants, but we were also the judges for the mental health courts here in Nuaces County. So I have a very deep understanding of the issues that we are faced with the mental health and the indigent, indigent care issues. So I look forward to getting to work with the, the new board members as well as the, the remaining board members. And I think that we're going to make Nuaces County proud with the work that we do. And, you know, we're all here for the right reasons. So I'm really looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And of course, Executive Director Johnny Hip is here, so please at least check in with him today or, you know, very soon, so that you all can exchange contact information. And, and we'll get the information to Bell as well. So at any rate, we thank you very much. And, and this is a, a very bright future that we have. Okay. Putting us back into the order of business, I need to turn my notebook back. But I know it's your turn, Noe. I just know it. I just don't know the number yet. But you've been super patient. Thank you so much. Three A one for the clerk. It's receiving the information that we really need before we make some decisions from Estrada, Inojosa and Company. That company is Bobby Villarreal. I've decided that. That's what it means. The company is Bobby.
You need to talk to my wife about that.
Okay.
We all work for our women.
And as you should. And on, on a serious note, gosh, we were with you this, yesterday afternoon. We worked late into the night. I got here first thing this morning. You were here. Look, this is, this is the most important thing that we do all year and, and your advice and counsel is, is very valued. So what you're seeing, Commissioners, is new. Is that correct? Brand new, not given to you in your emails. We had to make some adjustments last night. And it has to do with changes in the law and, and really trying to accomplish what we need, which is infrastructure. Funding. So Noe, take it away with that.
Well, I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't say, thank you, Dell Ashley, for, and your staff for working with us through this couple of days too. And basically, the first page, I think that's, that's about the only page I think that is, that is not new. I think as you go through the meeting later today, what's not included on that page too is what you anticipate to be the tax rate, the proposed tax rate for 2020. And that tax rate is being proposed at a, at a point thirty-one, one-six, thereabouts, right? And the portion for debt that we've always used, the tax rate that we've always used has been point zero four four three. The proposed is going to be point zero four two one. So we're working within that, we work within that tax rate, point zero four two one. So when you look at the chart on the very right-hand corner, you'll see that the tax rate being proposed is thirty-one, one-six, which is less than thirty-one, thirty-one by about fifteen basis points, I guess, or point fifteen of a penny, I guess. And then the tax rate for INS will be point oh four two one. It would support also about this page is keeping an eye on callable dates so that when we have options to refinance debt, to restructure debt, we always keep an eye on, on what, how many bonds you have outstanding. That's more for the benefit of the public, because I know you all know that. So as it stands right now, we're looking at maybe refinancing a 2020 bond issue that will help us in part get some little savings. And then maybe sometime in 21, we may do the 22 bonds that are there right above that. Then on page three, this is basically what would happen if you were to do nothing. I think what I want to point out to you is three numbers. On the second column from left to right, second row, you'll see a number thirty million, thirty billion, two hundred and nine million, nine ninety-eight, one seventy-five. So that's one number that I want to point out to you because that's a number that we're working from. That's the number that Dell works with. Then the second number is on top on the second, on the third column, right above it, there's a assumed collection ratio of ninety-eight percent. That's the collection ratio we're using now. And then on the right side, there is a, another number, four million, three forty-four in a square on the right side. And then the one for benefit of, of, of you and the public is the, the one that is highlighted in yellow at point, point oh four two one two six. Those numbers basically is what, what makes, I guess, the, the plan of finance, hopefully reasonable and feasible as you go about embarking on how to address funding for what's being presented to you through a CIP of about a hundred and twenty million dollars. The objective over the next five years, the objective is to see how can you fund the first tranche of about forty million dollars. So when you go to page four, assuming on those four components, we will borrow forty million dollars. The county will borrow forty million dollars on or about September 25th. And the payment on that, the anticipated, the, the payment on that will be about a million, four thirty-five, a million, five eighty. And then starting in twenty-eight, about three million, seven eighty-nine. Then there is another column right after that says issuer contribution. And by borrowing forty million and, and having the assumptions we have, we're making, we're taking, we're making this assumption from our perspective that you would have to take out about a million, four seventy from the savings account that is in this particular fund. Dell and I have spoken about this. If you notice, our, our projections for growth tend to be a bit more conservative than even his. We think that next year, we will be able to reinstate that tax rate a little higher by about twenty basis points. In other words, go back to where we were at forty-four or point, four point four cents for INS. That we'll be able to capture a big portion of, of that levy that we wouldn't have for the twenty-year. So when we go back to twenty-one, we'll have about seven fifty. And, and thus, when you get ready to do the second installment in twenty-two, we think that will be very helpful. And not only being able to afford that second installment, but most importantly, make sure that we don't deplete that fund balance in this particular fund.
Right. So just to kind of recap here, what we're, what we're proposing here that I see is the interest and sinking tax rate is going to go down this year. But most likely, it will need to be returned to where it was last year in two years. Or next year, next year. And, and in addition to that, what we, I think you're very, very conservative, which I understand. But our hope is, is that growth will at least track, you know, I think it's probably going to be at least five to six percent. That increased growth plus the change in the tax rate will take care of our needs in order to make our payment.
Take care of our reserve that we don't want to deplete.
Right.
Then hopefully, as we wait another year for the twenty-two, when the installment, the second tranche is expected to be funded, we will have a better idea.
Sufficient.
Whether we can afford to do the second installment.
So you're saying our reserve is going to be good, but we won't be able to do anything, anything like we're doing this year?
That's correct. We have to wait and see whether growth, the six percent that we think that can come through will, will occur. It is really hard to predict growth.
Right. In other words, we're good for the forty million to handle our infrastructure needs. But on the next grouping, we really need to make sure that we have the right growth so that we don't get into the situation that we got into some time back where we're depleting our savings. That's really important. Okay. I think, I think I understand. And, and again, that tax rate going down, it's sort of a cautionary tale today. It goes down today, but it really needs to be restored next year to where it was last year.
So if you turn the page.
Okay.
That's the most compelling part of this whole thing, improving that it becomes a real challenge to funding all of the CIP unless you make an adjustment on tax rate. And that is how that column that we were just at, that column needs a lot of help in terms of generating more revenues. So either we have growth, we have an upward increase in the INS tax rate in, in the second and third installments for this CIP to be funded at this level of forty million, forty million and forty million. And you'll see that there's a column that says issuer contribution surplus or deficit. In this case, we're having to draw there. But that's not going to occur until two years from now, thereabouts.
Got it.
So and then the other challenge is a legal challenge. We, we didn't want to be presumptuous of the fact that you would approve a plan of finance today. And even if you would, it would be very difficult for us to do a, what we normally have done here in this county, that is a certificate of obligation. Dell, in order to set up a tax rate, which I assume you're expecting it to be adopted on September 25th?
Tax rate's today.
Today, you're going to set the tax rate? And then to send notices out there?
I'll have to send them out the, the eleventh.
Okay. So in order, we're assuming that we would have a this debt pa, this debt payment in place, which we don't have, right? So in order to be able to have that debt payment, we must sell a bond on or about the, the 25th of September. And in order to get there, I need to sell, instead of an obligation, certificate of obligation, we will sell a tax note. We sell the tax on the 25th, then we will come back probably a couple of months later and do a refunding bond with a long-term structure like the one that's been presented today here.
And that's to meet our time constraints.
Meet your time constraints.
And will our interest rates be competitive on that tax note?
Well, I think if you check out your Bloomberg today, you'll find that tax rates or interest rates continue to work in our favor.
Okay.
That's more luck than being smart, but.
I'll take luck.
Yeah. So that's where we are. But I think, you know, your rates, I mean, the, the most important thing is trying to preserve the tech, the credit ratings. I think I share with some of you that, that Moody's happens to be in town tomorrow for, for meetings with the city. We're doing some utility financings over there. So I've encouraged the rating agencies to come down and see, you know, the activity going on in Corpus Christi so that we can preserve those ratings and continue to borrow at the lowest rates possible. And I share with a good friend of ours there that, that you come over to the courthouse. So tomorrow they'll be here around eleven, I think.
Yes, we'll be ready for them.
So I'll stop. And any questions you may have?
Commissioners, questions? There's no action needed, Noe, then, at this time? Or do you need us to create an action? Would you like to have a consensus so that you can go forward? Otherwise, you're not, you're not able to go and pursue the, the tax note for us?
The next thing what I want to do is, is bring back to you on the 25th, they sell, and that will be a commitment.
Okay. Lourdes got up and left, but I'm, I'm imagining that we will need a, a motion to pursue the tax note.
Wouldn't we do something on September 11th then to set it up for September 25th?
Do that today. But I think today, if anything, just to, I guess, make a motion that you adopt our plan or, or accept.
What is the rate? What, what's the current rate and what is the rate go to again?
Well, right now, on, on a tax note, I don't really have the particular rate on the tax note because it's going to be a short note. Instead of being a twenty-year note, we're looking at a structure over, over seven years. So it's a very constrained note. But then we're going to refinance it with an expected longer term. So look at page four.
So, but this is.
So look at page four. These are just obligations. These are just assumptions I'm, I'm making on your behalf, Commissioner.
So what are you asking for us for?
Basically that you understand that the. Basically that you understand that this is what we're undertaking, a financing for forty million dollars that I will bring to you on or about the twenty-fifth. This is a plan of finance. So in order for me to go out and, and do a bond sale on the twenty-fifth, I have to make very determining decisions on your behalf as to presenting this to the rating agencies. It will be an official action to go out and talk to the rating agencies on your behalf. Then work with a team of underwriters to help us go out and, and do the financing so that when I come here on the twenty-fifth, oh, we hadn't heard about this.
Okay, so wait.
So go ahead.
Current, the current rate is what?
So right now, the current rate that I am assuming, go to page four, on the yellow column at the very top, this, there's a little acronym that says TIC, True Interest Cost, three point two seven six. I suspect that the rate on that is.
No, no, go, go to the required ISS tax rate. That's what I'm looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm asking about.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So you're, you're saying right now the rate is forty-four and under your proposal, it's going to go down to forty-two?
Yes. Under the proposal that Dale and I would be talking about.
Which, which is thirty-five million dollars more?
No.
That's what this, or I'm sorry, forty million more?
What that gives you is the ability to fund forty million dollars in projects. Despite the fact that you're lowering the tax rate, you can get there. We can get there.
But that's what I'm making sure is.
Yes, sir.
You're proposing a forty million dollar bond that will, because we have other bonds dropping off, I guess, or we're paying off, or however you want to say it, it'll drop our INS rate from forty-four down to forty-two. Is that a fair?
Four point four to four point two cents.
But right, it'll drop the INS rate because, and that's with the new forty million that you're proposing.
That's correct, thank you for clarifying it. Yes, sir.
Just making sure I'm.
But next year, Brent, he's, he's cautioning that, that it, you don't know. It's speculation, because we don't know what the growth will do. But he's, he's warning that we can take this haircut this year, but next year it may have to go back to four point four. But this year, we can definitely go to four point two.
And that's what I'm not following, because on his proposal, it doesn't show it going back up. It shows it staying at four point two until twenty twenty-six.
Well, in fact, if you see that, yeah, it actually, we continue to drop it. Because we're not stopping at this tranche. We're actually know, we know that in order to fund a CIP of a hundred and twenty million, I gotta build in advance of the second tranche.
Well, that's if we do that. I mean, that's, that's up to.
So that's, that's a, that's a year, two years from now, so.
Right, because.
He's only basing it on the forty, but he's.
Right, because what we talked about was there are IRS regulations that say you're supposed to spend this bond money within three years. So if we go and pass three successive forty million dollar bonds, can we possibly even, you know, spend it in three years? So the next bond might not be for two years, because we got to see where we are with the forty million.
Three years, for that matter.
Right, so, because, so if all we do is forty million. Well, today, then the rate would go down or stay at four two ones two six until twenty twenty-five. And the only reason that it would go up would be as if we added additional bond money.
That is correct.
So if we as a court decide, well, we don't want the rate to go up anymore, and we can't handle another forty million until, let's say, not next year, but the year after, then that rate could stay the same for a while.
Well, the only thing I'll caution you is that when you go over to the, to the twenty-one year, the, the tax rate you're adopting now is four point, four point two cents. I would like to bring it back to four point four so that we protect the reserves within the interest and sinking fund.
But that's not this year.
That will be this year coming in twenty, we will have to hit.
But I'm saying this year, right now. You're not wanting to go to four four now.
In fact, this year, the fund balance we, we put in there, four million, three, things Dale was telling us, that maybe we can hit about five million dollars. So that would be great.
So we would have to vote on something else to do, all these other stuff. I'm just trying to figure out what, what you're wanting us to do today, okay? Forget the possible haircut and the possible addition.
Got it.
Right. Well, for me, everybody else may have different questions, but I'm just trying to say, what are you asking for us today? We're not committing, we're not committing, we're not committing to anything other than this forty million and this four two one six today. So all the other intangibles, that's for next year's court, and we'll figure that out later.
I want your consent to proceed, so that I can come here on the twenty-fifth and you don't be surprised.
And the reason you need the consent is because, this is what we talked about this morning, is just there's some time constraints. You really can't afford to wait till our next meeting.
We have to make representation.
Because we, right, and Dale needs to make sure that all this happens by September thirtieth. So it, it, it's the idea that we're, we're voting to, the motion would be to authorize or consent that.
The plan of finance presented.
Right, as provided by Estrada Nogosa.
And Laura, or Dale, what, what does this do to our?
The notice just says receive a presentation.
Yeah, I didn't see any vote on this one, but.
There's, there's nothing to vote on.
If, if you're just looking for consensus, I get that. But so Dale, what does this do to our tax rate for this year?
The tax rate is, as we proposed already, the debt service stays at the point four two one two six, the, the operating funds as we have. So this will not change any rates we, we kind of talked about.
So if, and I'm not suggesting it, but so if we didn't do this forty million, then our ISS rate would drop, thus our tax rate would drop even more.
Our tax rate right now includes all of our requirements that we have, which didn't include additional requirements. So if we do this, and those other forty million that we're talking about, and it's like a one point five million dollar interest for the year, that would have to be spent from this year's funds, which would reduce our fund balance in the, in the INS.
Wait, wait, wait. If we didn't do this bond, I'm saying, our INS tax rate would drop more than the four two, because we're not doing the forty.
No, 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 uh-uh.
Four two includes the requirements that we have at the, at the moment, which is our twelve million dollars requirement that does not include this forty million dollars that we're talking about right now.
Because the first payment in twenty twenty for this particular financing will literally be taken out of reserves accumulated during this year, two thousand nineteen.
So this forty million dollar bond doesn't have an effect on this year's tax rate one way or the other?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's why we can afford to go down.
Just making sure I got it.
So, okay, so Lourdes, I understand you were saying that it says to receive a presentation, but in order, you know, we have to make certain that we give guidance to our financial counselor and consultant. Can you give me some guidance, because he needs it?
You can give some guidance, but don't, don't take a vote.
Okay, well, I'm giving the guidance as the county judge, that I have heard from commissioners, unless I hear otherwise, that we wish, it is our wish and our intent for you to proceed with the plan of finance as presented, as it does not change our INS tax rate. In fact, it allows us to keep a lower tax rate and pursue a forty million dollar note to be presented to us, this tax note, which will then turn into a CEO, it'll morph into a CEO at some later time.
Morph into a refunding bond.
A refunding on possibly September twenty-fifth.
More like October, November.
Okay. But you might come back to us with more information on.
On the twenty-fifth?
On the twenty-fifth.
Doing something official.
Correct. Okay. And, and including all the reimbursement language and all of that. Okay. And you'll be working with our bond counsel, Ms. Fernandez, to make sure we get all the right language to Mr. Little.
And I'm going to recommend we do something on September eleventh. That'll put everything in order, just have bond counsel get with me.
Not, not that you're waiting on it, Noe, that as a backup, so the court has a record of it. Isn't that what you mean, Tyner?
That's correct.
Whatever Dana wants.
Whatever he, he gets. Okay, are there any other questions? The interest and sinking is always such an interesting, particular part of our tax rate. It's, it, it might take a while to absorb that, but I really think it's important that the final is that, that we're at four point four two, okay? I'm sorry. Point zero four two, forgive me. Four point two.
Yes, sir.
Trying to observe, absorb this too, you know, but.
Yes.
No, and I, I was sitting with Commissioner Chesney a while ago, but right now we're zero point two?
Right now.
Zero four two?
Zero point four four, that's where you are today. And you've been there for about four, five years.
Okay, zero, zero point.
Four four.
So you're saying that we go down to four two?
That's right, four point two, yeah.
For two, for twenty nineteen.
Yes, for twenty twenty, for twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty four two. And then in twenty-one, we're going to, we're going back up?
Yes.
Four four again, four four.
Another increase in value.
And, and depends on the increase in value and depends on how hard we hit the reserves in this particular fund. That's a, that's key.
But we only go up if we voted to go up?
You only, exactly.
And I'm getting brought this point up, because right now, it's going to be easy for everybody to vote yes. But when it comes to vote no, they're not going to vote no. So somebody's got to vote yes, because we've got to go up. So this is, this is what we, this is the dilemma we, that I don't think is fair sometimes, because, yeah, we're all going to vote yes right now, because, yeah, it, it been, we were going down.
If you want me to vote no, I'll vote no, but.
I got the floor, man.
Sure, I'm just saying.
You know, so I'm just saying, when it comes to voting yes, to go up is not, it's another issue, you know what I'm saying? So, and I don't think that's a fair issue, but.
But, but it may change everything, Joe. You don't know how that's going to go next year, because. Exactly, so.
Hold on, Brent, I don't, I don't interrupt you when you're talking.
Well, you do.
Okay. Yeah, and then in twenty, in twenty-one, it'll be, again, we might have to go up four, four point four, right?
That's right.
So by going up four point four, what, we don't know how much that's going to be, right?
Well, no, you, you, we do project, and it's all projections. That's why we got to wait and see how the year twenty twenty comes through and then twenty-one. We project that we can generate by going up two tenths of a penny, about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which then will help us if in fact we hit in twenty twenty the, the reserves by a million and a half, as we know we, we will probably, maybe, maybe a million. Well, if we bring back that four point two cent to four point four, that gets a seven fifty. We, we don't, we don't deplete the fund balance as much. And that's what the rating agencies care. It's a very miniscule thing, but every miniscule thing adds up, and that's all it is. But you don't have to make that decision today, it's a decision for next year. And only you will make that decision. Hopefully, you know, we'll, you know, we don't need to make that decision then, but, you know, we just got to wait and see how the values come through next year.
And the most important thing is that, you know, the auditor is working with us to make sure that these numbers are the right requirements, right? That it's a calculation that really is determined by the requirements, isn't that correct?
That's correct. You determine the, your, your debt requirements and the state requires that you, you have a tax rate high enough to meet your requirements. And, and if that is meaning that you use some of your fund balance to, to get your rate correctly, that is correct.
Right, so I don't want you to think you have a lot of decision-making power here.
Right.
Okay? The, these are, these are requirements that are set to make sure we can meet these obligations. It's a protection for us, it's, anyway, okay, I think that we all.
Go, go get it.
Think we got it.
On behalf of Villarreal and Associates, we thank you.
I heard that. See, Bobby, I'm making you partner. Bobby Villarreal always helps us, you know, of course, everyone always knows Noe, but I want to acknowledge Bobby. He was part of this team that really has guided me in this first budget process. So I've learned very clearly, no, no offense, Ernest and Dale, but I've learned very clearly, there's accountants and there's finance guys. And the two are very structured, very different, you know, in their method, methodology. But together, you are a great team. So it takes both, both the budget process and the finance in order to meet our infrastructure needs in this case. But it was a very good process. But boy, did we do a roller coaster. I think, I think we, by Jove, I think we've got it now. So, okay, moving on, Tyner, please just keep us straight. These, these, we cannot afford one day off, you know what I mean? On, on bond counsel, you know, getting it on the agenda correctly to make sure those approvals for that tax note to be issued appropriately. Okay. All right. I'd like Lourdes to help me, I think we should go into the public hearing at this time.
Go ahead and.
Is that all right? And do I need to close where I was? Do I need to recess, Lourdes?
Judge, I would just move, we go into public hearing, I think would be the right.
All right, well, then we'll just go in.
Open up, have a motion to open.
Right. So I'll entertain a motion to go into public hearing, because that's letter F, and that puts us back on track. By the way, this public hearing is not just for Nueces County, but it's also for the Nueces County Hospital District. And this is, of course, for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. How's that? Okay? Do we have any, if you wouldn't mind, we can close the door in just a second. Do we have any comments at this time that need to be received? Yes, sir? Absolutely. If you'll just tell everybody who you are, I know, we know, but.
My name's Ernest Scarsa, I'm a local CPA. I've had the privilege of serving as your outside auditor like eighteen years. And this year, I've had the privilege to work with you on your, your budget and tax rate. And I want to thank you, the judge, commissioners, the staff, Dale, Lisa, Teresa, Tyner, Julie, and many, many others. What, I want to kind of first back what the, the mission on this budget. And there were some given, it was almost a given that you were going to go to a higher tax rate and increase the tax rate, especially that you're getting handcuffed by the state with their new laws on this upcoming Senate bill two. And yet, you had a lot of mandates, state, local contracts you had to come back and honor. So you had like five million dollars of issues to address. So, and you've come back to include in that a major increase in your, for your proposing on your salaries. And so I see that being a real good synergistic effect to helping the staff on your proposed budget. To top that, now you're also proposing a lower tax rate. So again, this has come to be a win-win situation for the county as a taxpayer and to the employees. I know you still have projects to work with on best practices that I've seen, that we work together. And again, there was a lot of give and take on this. And again, I just want to say, I, I, I think you're, you're moving well and I, with your proposed rate and your proposed budget. Again, thank you for allowing me working with you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Ernest.
Thank you, Ernest.
At this time, I'll entertain any other members of the public to offer comment. Okay, hearing none. Can I?
Move to close.
Move to close at this time, or do I need to wait a sufficient time?
You really have to go through the presentation?
Sorry.
You have a presentation?
Well, we have our proposed budget, you mean the actual one that we did last time? Dale, do you have a presentation?
On the budget, there's a presentation.
Yes.
And then after the presentation, you.
Okay.
Address the, the audience to see if somebody wants to come in.
Okay. I think he's working to get it organized right now. Do you need some time? I'm happy to give it.
We're, we're ready, dear.
Okay.
This is just a public hearing to talk about what our proposed budget will be. I'm going to go through some items that we've had before to show you some, some different items. When we actually get into our agenda items, where we talk about the budget, we'll be glad to go into more thorough and, and the discussion of some of the points. But this is just a general briefing for, for the public to say where, where we're at. So if you, go ahead. What we're proposing is, we're proposing a tax rate of point three one one five eight eight per one hundred dollar valuation for the county. This is an increase of point zero one two six zero one above the effective rate. For the hospital district, we're proposing a, using the effective rate of point one one two four two one. And if you combine those two rates, the total combined rate would be point four two four zero zero nine per hundred dollar valuation. We're also asking the commissioners' court to consider that they're, they continue using the exemptions that we provide in the past, continue to provide an over sixty-five and disability tax exemption of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars on county and hospital district homesteads. Continue to provide a homestead tax exemption of twenty percent of your home value for, for a county as well as hospital district. And for the county to continue to provide a cap on the tax levy for those that are over sixty-five and those that are disabled for homestead within Oasis County. The next balance just shows you a, a offering of the other entities within Oasis County. And we only chose the one school district, because with this would be a very long slide if we didn't. But this shows you the breakdown of how our exemptions compare to those that are, that are within the county. Okay, this shows you a historical rate of where our, our tax rates are. As you see, back in two thousand and four, we were at point four three zero. And as of today, we're, we're proposing a rate of point three one one six combined rate. The hospital rate, as we said, will be continued at the effective rate. In two thousand and four, we were at point two two five. The hospital rate, as we said, will be continued at the effective rate, in two thousand and four, we were at point two two five. For this, this particular area, we're at, we're proposing the effective rate of point one one two.
And Dale, I'm gonna just bring you back, 'cause in case anyone's listening at home on the combined rate, that's your MNO, your INS, and your road fund.
As well as hospital district, yes. The next one is, is your combined tax rate, which, as you said, includes your, your general fund MNO rate, your debt service rate, your foreign market, as well as hospital district. In two thousand and four, we were at point six five five, and if we do our, our, our elections today and we adopt the rate that's being proposed at the moment, we will reduce our rate to point four two four, which is a reduction from last year. Here's the thing we talked about, there was a little, little small error in the value on the one for nineteen, sorry about that, uh, but we still see that our threshold of trying to get our fund balance up to our target level is improving from two thousand and seven and going to where we're at. And we went in and shown you the, the proposed value, but we all pretty much know that if all of our values hold steady, that, that probably be closer at the, in the twenty twenty year that we have, instead of only six hundred thousand difference between the two. Judge, I took your, 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 your point yesterday about trying to find out what would be the same value of a home.
Yes.
So I did a hundred thousand dollar home for both, to show you what the balance would be for what the tax rate was last year, to what the tax rate this year on a valued house at the same value. As you see in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, your total taxable levy value on a hundred thousand dollar house would be four hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents at the rate that was adopted last year. If we go to the rate we're proposing today for both the county and the hospital district, a point four two four zero zero nine, your proposed tax levy would be four hundred and twenty-four dollars, and that would be a six dollars and seventy-five cents reduction. Here's just showing you the tax share of, of how your house is broken down by, by how much dollars you spend in taxes, how much goes to particular entity within your county, in your city, and the county as well, showing you the school district is the largest per share, share, with the city being second, and with the county being third, and the county does include foreign market road. We just show you where, or where the funds come from for the county, and our portion right now, forty-nine percent of our total money coming in, per dollar, is going to taxes, and the rest is broken down between, uh, intergovernmental revenue investments, as well as fees and fines. Here's some of the items that we will be talking about later, when we get to the, uh, uh, discussion of our proposed budget, and we'll go to this in greater detail at, at that time. Right now, no, go back one, where we had a, a collective bargaining agreement negotiation with the sheriff's office and constable's offices, uh, association, and we have a, a negotiation where we have a contract that included a one million dollar increase this year, and the next two or three years will, will be less than this one million dollars, but we wanted to make sure, because of, of stuff we not, we, we have coming in the future, would be there. There's relatively about two hundred and seventy-three employees that get a continuous, and continuous is for every three years of, of service that you, that the employee has in the county, right now, you get two and a half percent for every three years after your third year. Our retirement contributions went up because of some, uh, investments that they have at, at the, at the state level that, that required our contribution level for our retirement plan to be increased, and that was, that was an eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollar increase. As was, as was told, we are planning on opening the, uh, dormitories at the annex very soon, and with doing so, to meet the, uh, commissioner jail standards requirements, we have to provide officers for that location. Currently, we were told that there would be four, four, uh, uh, four, uh, four times three, which is the twelve employees they need, they were, how they work it up, and that's five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars that they need. The state went in and decided that they needed to increase the district judges, as well as state prosecutor level salaries, and our county court law judges by law are, are tied to those increases as well. So with that, there is a requirement to increase our county court law judges of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand six seventy, and this is based on years of service for the judge. Here's some items that we, we're talking about, discussion through every, uh, through that, and we'll get, and this is definitely more detailed, very, very, and when we talk about our budget. We're limiting in new positions that we have, as we said, we're, we're bringing the, the correctional officers, we're bringing four, uh, sergeants into the jail to be able to do, uh, uh, release. We're doing, uh, two officers that are mental commitments, and those, those two officers are, will be refunded by the hospital district. We're doing some other, uh, additions to helping the, the district attorney's office by adding a high profile and, and large crimes, as, as well as a, a victims coordinator supervisor position, as well as my office is, is needed an internal audit position, and there's others we'll talk about more in, in great detail. We did do a small number of reclassification, these reclassifications were required by our collective bargaining agreement, because we have console operators that are now being required to be correctional officers, as well as we did a, a small moving from a temporary to a permanent position for another office, so there was a small increase of limited reclassifications, but there was no other reclassifications that were, that were included. The next is the living wage, now this living wage, uh, before was for those of below thirty thousand dollars, however, we've, with negotiation of, of, through the court, we've now had pay group eleven through twenty-eight is now part of this, and we'll talk about that later in great detail when we get to those, those items, and that, right now, the total cost for all that increase to try to give those people a, a, a relatively decent living rate, wage, and some will still be low, but we're, we're trying to get them at a level that, that meets the needs that they have for their families, that, that cost is two million twelve thousand dollars. We, we have a, a, a risk assessment program currently going on in our jail that started, uh, two years ago with a grant, and they've been working on it this year as well, and it's, and, and with, uh, talking with the sheriff and talking with the other i- items, it's, has been very beneficial to our, to our jail to try and to, to make sure those that, that can be released are released, to try to reduce our population, again, our costs on the jail, and that cost is one fifty, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the year. As we just, as we just were briefed about, uh, a, a possible fi- uh, financial funding plan for a, a certificate obligation, and that's what their capital improvement plans are. As we know, we, we first bring out more ADA building improvements that we have, we started with ten buildings, we still have several more that Tyner has a long list for. And as y'all do know, because some of the judges brought it to our attention, as well as, uh, several citizens, is our courthouse elevators work sometimes, don't work sometimes, and that needs to be addressed and tried to get resolved. As we know, our chillers are, are at a, a very old age and need to be replaced, 'cause this courthouse, because the, the temperature will get hot if these chillers go out, and we need to make sure we have fundings for this. And then we do know the Metrocom radio is go- going to be replaced from the city, and we are required to buy our, our MOU agreement with the city to pay for a portion of this. Now, part of this, this Metrocom may be handled in a different way, may not go through the CO, it may be through a, a financing option, where it's, it's a more of a lease type of financing, but we wanted to include it here just in case. This is kind of where we show you where our money goes for the county. Where you see that the law enforcement spends, for every dollar, they spend thirty, for every dollar, thirty-four percent of every dollar goes to the law enforcement, twenty-five percent goes to every, uh, to the administrative justice, so as you see, for every dollar, about sixty percent of our, every dollar goes to either law enforcement or administration of justice. The rest is the general government, which is most of our, 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 our departments, as we have, building facilities, as well as other functions, those other functions include our libraries, our, our, our health and human services, as well as our, our ELC. Our impacts for the future year coming up, as you know, uh, our revenue cap next year, we'll, uh, this will be a, a very, very lengthy discussion next year, when we know that our rollback rate will be going down from eight percent to three and a half percent, and that's gonna cause some, some issues that we need to have, but that'll be addressed next year when we come to that, that portion. As I said, we did have that collective bargaining agreement negotiation, and that agreement spelled out what the requirements would be for the next four years for that, that particular item. Uh, that is our, our public hearing for our budget.
I just wanna add that, um, and just, we, we got a lot of good information, but, and I know we're gonna go into greater detail, but because we have members of the district attorney's office here, the victim witness coordinator is also in there as well, it's not just, um, uh, that, that would, that was the extra or the additional position that we added, the victim witness coordinator is one, and the second one was the high, uh, crimes prosecutor. In addition, in county court at law, number five, I wrote a note to remind everybody that it's very important that for the first time, we're gonna have a guardianship investigator, which is also required by law, but we had not been able to make that a new position available. We now have found a very intriguing way of combining our bailiff, who also has a certification for the guardianship investigator position. We believe this to be, um, very important, as it will reduce, um, we hope, ad litem fees in that court. So, those were two standouts in my mind that I wrote down, and there are many others, by the way, this is not an inclusive list. As the capital improvement plan slide is not an inclusive list either, but in order to provide the highlights and the direction of where we're going, I thought that was a very excellent, uh, presentation, and it's also the same one we used last night at our town hall, where we received comments and opportunity to converse with the public. And I thank all commissioners who were able to at least, uh, pay notice that, that they were, uh, there, and, uh, they could not stay, but that was for legal reasons, but they were all present, and all were very involved in the town hall process, in fact, it was Commissioner Matas who suggested the town hall process. I hope the public saw value to that. Um, at this time, I'll ask, uh, if there's anybody, any members of the public who wish to make comment regarding the presentation they've just seen, or any comments that have been made within that presentation. We're happy to go over it again, happy to discuss anything that's in that, in those slides that you just saw. Okay.
Judge, move to close the public hearing?
No.
Still have hospital district.
I have to do the hospital district next.
Oh, oh, for hospital district.
Okay, but I can proceed to the hospital district now at this time, and so, um, we're gonna switch the, um, slides, and we have executive director Johnny Hip, we're just gonna get you set up, Johnny.
Take your time, Danny.
Yeah.
We got all day. We're here all night. We're here all weekend. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, uh, are you ready for me to proceed?
I am, thank you.
Um, what I've handed out to you is a, is a, is a summarized version of the budget booklet that's in your, uh, commissioners' court packet, starting, I think, on page twenty-seven. So what I'd like to do here is just to run through, uh, a couple of three trends, and then do a very brief discussion of the hospital districts' revenue and expenses, and then I can answer detailed questions, and I have some supplemental information to add. So the first slide I wanna show you is, uh, on the handout, page three, it's identical to the, uh, a tax rate trend graph that Dale showed you earlier, and just to highlight that we're continuing to use, or will use in this year's budget, the effective tax rate, which is the point one one two four two one. On the, uh, the next slide on page four, uh, this is a history of, uh, the hospital districts' major expenditures. Uh, almost ninety percent of the district's expenditures are tied to intergovernmental transfers, and so this is just a trend of where those have been in the past, and the trend line is positive, obviously. The next one is on page five, is the county healthcare, uh, services expenditure trend. Uh, this also is, is an increasing trend, and I do wanna point out that for, um, the, for twenty nineteen, uh, that, that blip in the, in the line has to do with the, um, amount of funds MHI D had requested, uh, for, uh, doing the jail diversion program, and that number is not netted against the amount that they returned to us. Okay, so if that was the case, it would probably be a smoother line. Yes. Okay, and so, uh, the last of the trends is on page six, and, uh, this is the hospital districts' fund balance history. Uh, there's basically two funds that we have that retain reserves, and that's the, um, indigent care fund and the general fund, and the numbers here shown represent both of those funds together. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is a slide six for the, uh, a total fund balance history. So the, uh, the next part of the, uh, presentation has to do with some graphs that talk about of the budget that we're presenting to you all for approval today. Um, this is a pie graph of the district's, uh, revenue, uh, sources, and the main thing I wanna point out about this is that, um, seventy percent of the district's revenues do not come from taxes. Okay, so the other, the remaining amount, the twenty-nine percent, is made up of tax revenues, but seventy-one of this, seventy-one percent comes from our membership arrangement with SPON. On the next page.
Interesting, right, Jack, uh, Johnny, tobacco's still hanging in there.
Yes, ma'am, it's, uh, I wouldn't say it's de minimis, but it's a, it's a small amount, uh, yes. We still put that to work every year, though.
Right.
So, uh, the next slide is, uh, slide nine, and essentially it just shows what I just said, is that the, uh, the district's, uh, revenue sources are twenty-eight percent from taxes and seventy-two percent from, uh, non-tax. The, uh, the next pie graph, uh, on page, uh, ten, uh, shows the, uh, the detail for the district's general fund expenditures, and this is where we have our expenditures coming in and out of. And, uh, as it shows, eighty-nine percent of our expenditures are almost ninety are associated with, uh, intergovernmental transfers, uh, followed by six point six three percent that cover healthcare, county healthcare expenses. And then the, uh, the next, uh, chart, and the, uh, the last one I have to show to you, uh, uh, shows the, the district's general fund, uh, expenditures, and when you combine intergovernmental transfers and the county expenditures, they account together for ninety-six percent of our expenditures, and four percent are for all other things that we, uh, pay for. So, uh, Commissioners, I'd just like to close with a, a couple of other things, and then, and answer your questions, if you all have any. The budget that you all have in your book, uh, was reviewed by the district's finance committee on Monday, recommended for board approval. The board, uh, reviewed, uh, the budget unanimously approved it also on Monday. Uh, the tax rate we're proposing is the lowest the district has had since nineteen ninety-six. The budget is not balanced, uh, because it relies on use of general fund reserves. Uh, and also, uh, the most important thing is that the, uh, the district's obligation for providing, uh, indigent healthcare is taken care of as a part of this budget as a result of our membership agreement. The, uh, other thing is there's IGTs that are in your budget book, and we can talk about, you have those questions. Those IGTs supplement, uh, all the healthcare, uh, systems and providers in our county by making available to them supplemental Medicaid payments that they could not have received had we not made the IGTs. And so Commissioners, that's, that's what I have, if you have questions.
I think just to emphasize that, you know, you, um, you did a great job in that you're able to work with the effective rate this year to provide for your budget. Every year is a new year, we don't know what ne- tomorrow will bring, but we know that for this year, you were able to work with the effective rate, and in doing so, you were the greatest contributor to helping Noises County have an overall lower tax rate, and it should be noted, and it should be appreciated. And I don't know if you wanna say what the number is, but it's point, you might wanna just, for, for the public's information, did you already state? Point one.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, but I'll restate it again, the effective tax rate that we're using as proposed for our budget is point one one two four two one per hundred dollars valuation.
Thank you.
I was just gonna add to what Judge Canel said, I think the board's done a terrific job with their budget, and I appreciate all the work that you've done and they've done, and please pass that on for me as well, so thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? We are gonna kind of get more, you know, in-depth, Johnny, but, um, but I think this is definitely good for right now. Um, probably the only other thing worth mentioning is, uh, how much we appreciate, you'll notice in the budget, there were several items. Dale mentioned one earlier, the mental health commitment officers for the sheriff. Um, there was some, you know, items that we discussed when we were having, when we had the workshop. I, I could list them, but if you have any questions in regards to that, but suffice it to say, uh, in addition to all the other programming that the, uh, hospital district already conducts for Noises County, this year, they're absorbing another two hundred and seventy thousand, and they were able to do that and lower their budget and lower their tax rate, so it's a, it's, it's not a one-two, it's a one-two-three this year. And, and again, all of those had a, a, a direct nexus. It's it's not a one-two, it's a one-two-three this year. And and again, all of those had a a a direct nexus from the Buffalo turbine. Sprayer to make sure that we can adequately cover our rural and Colonia areas. Uh, adequately with um, with the pesticide for for the mosquitoes that carry. Not only Zika and West Nile, but eight, you know, flu. So you know, this is a really important. Opportunity for us to make these nexuses and hopefully won't, we won't need any more turbine sprayers for a little while. But uh, but if we do, it's good to know that there's a nexus out there um, to be able to help. And you know what? There might be years where we help you. You just never know how the tide can turn. But for now, you did a great um, a great service to the citizens of Noises County.
Can I make my motion now Laura that I've mis- misread three times?
We we just have to make sure that that we have to, I have to call for public, but I think I did, but I'll double check it. Any, any further public comment, this time on the hospital district budget. Any public comment? Okay. All right, um, guess what? You're on.
I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
And I'll second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Okay.
I would like to point out that this uh, public hearing was published in the newspaper. And then the notice as well was running on public access TV. Since August fifteenth randomly on the public channel. And additionally, it's been posted on the New Oasis County website since August fifteenth. In legal form and also in accessible form uh to a screen reader under the ADA.
That's great. And and you know, it's so funny because I was disappointed, you know, I, we had some. People come to the town hall, but you know, I would have liked for there to have been a wider audience. But I'm real, I'm recognizing that, you know, people receive their information differently. And so we might in the future need to think about how we publicize information differently. And I know I T is working hard to get us a Facebook that really allows us to put out information in an appropriate way and it. That it adheres to American Disabilities Act. Because quite frankly, people just aren't reading the newspaper. As much as they were before. So I'm glad to know, Tyner, that you put it on public access TV, but I'm just thinking the future. Really is is just different. We're communicating differently and I I'm not blaming that. Maybe nobody wanted to. Come hear us at the town hall, but I really believe that if they had a better way of hearing the information, I don't know what you think, but.
I agree. Facebook's so huge right now.
I just, so anyway, I T is working on it. It's just there are very specific rules. For government entities to work within the Facebook um parameters. So I don't want you to think it's like how, it's not hard to get a Facebook. You're right, but it is hard. To have a governmental entity like a county have a Facebook. And so we are working to to bring that to you in our modernization effort. Okay, thank you anyway, Tyner. Um, I'm gonna flip back to my book here. And um. We are now at the point where we've closed and have I, do I need to reopen? Have I done that? I don't even recall. I've reopened the meeting. I'm reconvening the meeting at this time. If you're taking notes uh on time. Um, Madam Clerk, it's eleven forty-five A M. We're back in our regular meeting. And we're now on letter G to discuss and consider adopting an order rescinding the prior year budget resolutions and orders.
So moved.
All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Letter H, discussing and consider adoption of orders and resolutions related to this proposed twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Noises County budget.
So moved, sorry.
No worries. I'll take that as a first and a second, a motion and a second. All those in favor. It was a motion by Chesney and the second by Gonzalez. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. And now, as they say, the moment that you've been waiting for. Discuss and consider adoption of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Noises County budget. Dale, would you like to lead? I'm I'm happy to lead, but I feel like you should lead.
Well, do we? Since you just did the presentation.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, we we provided the uh, the presentation as you, as you had. We we provide you with a copy of the proposed uh budget book that has been filed with the county clerk as required by. The tax law. Uh, this book has several items that are for discussion. Now, these items can still be changed until there's a a vote on the budget. There's still options that that can be changed. Right now, we're proposing a tax rate of point three one one five eight eight. That's combined tax rate with the general fund. The debt service fund as well as foreign to market battle road. That is a slightly increase above the effective rate of point two eight. Nine eight seven uh for the the balances that we have. The uh. The debt rate is point zero four two one two six, as we talked about earlier, and that that covers a debt requirement of twelve million, five hundred and seven thousand, one seventy-two. Uh, I I I provided you a copy of the the budget book for you. Also provide to you a copy in the PDF. Uh, because we had did have a problem with our printer items. There should be a a section in the very front that kind of explains everything, but I'll be. I'll be glad to go into great detail of what we have. Uh, what we try to do is we try to get the consensus of what the court was. What we have, as we said before, there is a continuous pay increase of roughly two hundred and seventy-three employees at the cost we said of three hundred and twenty-one thousand. We did a, the collective bar agreement negotiation with the sheriff's office as well as the constable's office at a million forty-nine. Our retirement plan adjustment was eight fourteen. The correction officers that are required by the annex was at five hundred and forty-seven thousand. The small limited new positions that we discussed earlier and limited reclassifications. Now, the item goes to on the living wage. Now, this book does not and will not include a cost of living increase. It's not present and it won't be present at unless y'all decide this is something you all want to talk about now. What we did do is we did a living wage increase for uh several groups of employees. We have a pay group from a a pay group eleven to seventeen. We had a pay group from eighteen to twenty-one. Pay group twenty-two to twenty-five and pay group twenty-eight to, I mean twenty-five to twenty-eight. So there's four different pay groups we have. And each additional one had a particular cost with it. Now, those at pay group seventeen, which was at the top range, also got an increase. And those were, that was a very small increase of around two percent. And that same two percent also would be the ones that would be at a pay group twenty-one as well as twenty-five as well as twenty-eight. They all got a small increase to make sure they qualified with the ones that were below them. As you go down from seventeen down towards eleven, the percent increase gets higher to try to bring those up to. Pardon me. To a relatively modest uh, living wage increase. And I'll be glad to go through that. Now, it's kind of hard to see in the book that I provide you because I need to. Split the revenue out, I mean the the expense out per department on how it fits the the salaries. Uh, I wish it could be clear, but unfortunately it's not, but I'm trying to uh give you the idea that that this is what we've. The the consensus we had. This also does include. A small reclassification amount for our cadets. The cadets are now also will be receiving a. Uh, about a thousand dollars per one, per year for each one of them going from thirty-one to thirty-three thousand dollars for the cadets. And they are there and that's still slightly lower than the correction officers where it should be. And our correction officers. Part of the negotiation, the first level of correction officers, I believe is at thirty-six thousand. I could be wrong, but it's around that that number. Uh, we try to meet the requirements that y'all have put in there as well as some other small adjustments that the budget have. Uh, that's where our proposal is at the moment. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have at the at the moment.
Judge, I just want to say um. I don't know where we're going with all this, but exactly, but I just want to say I really appreciate your efforts. Um, we've created, you you've you've created a new term called living wage and I appreciate that. Um, I think it was uh, that that's gonna be something that all members of this court are gonna be extremely proud of. Assuming this one passes as is and doesn't get loaded back up or anything like that. Um, because I think um, we've we've really uh taken. A a hard um approach at at really helping um those employees. But also in balancing the fact that we also represent hundreds of other, hundreds of thousands of other taxpayers. Um, and and that that takes effort, you know, it's it's a balancing act. We want to help our employees and we want to do the right things. And I think we've done that in this budget, but. By lowering the tax rate uh at the same time, that also helps hundreds of thousands of other people. So I I think, you know. This this looks like a a good balance to me. I. Good, a good balance to me and um. It it's uh, I I will tell you, it was difficult for me to go through this and compare with what we were doing, but. Um, I did visit with Dale this morning just because I want to make sure that everything that we had talked about the last meeting was in there and. Nothing else had been added and he's assured me that that's where we're at. So I I appreciate the effort by everybody on the court, the auditor staff. Judges, everybody's staff in doing this. If I forgot to thank someone, I'm not trying to leave anybody out. So thank you very much.
Appreciate uh the comments and uh, the truth is, is that uh. I learned a long time ago, I think um. In Spanish, the word for parrot is perico. They used to call me that because I loved to talk. And uh, the truth is, is that we model in life. We model from our parents. We model from good leaders in our community. We model sometimes good things and bad things, but I've tried my best in my adult life in particular. To model people that I um, that I admire. And when they speak the truth, I know it to be true. And I try to adopt it, follow it, and then use my leadership um position to um implement it. And so the truth is, I appreciate the comment, but this is a true team effort. And Commissioner Gonzalez has spent the last six years formally and probably a lifetime informally. Advocating for what I consider the words now we use as living wage. And there were so many great people that we modeled off of that came before us. Um, I don't mean to get all historical on everybody, but I've been sentimental all morning, who knows why. And I'm remembering my grandmother and the famous La Marchas. My grandmother used to march. From Corpus Christi to Austin, marching for fair labor wages. I could never compare to her. But in in that memory, in that spirit, this is almost. La Marcha in a way, right? For those of you that know what I'm talking about, that your grandmothers and grandfathers participated. We know that there was not always this type of ability in government to create, you know, opportunity. It's not everything we want. I want that to be clear. But it is an amazing start. And it is a really important symbol to uh to show. And I appreciate that the recognition that there's a balancing act. Um, someone told me yesterday. You can't please everybody. You're right, you can't. But what we've done here is historical. Because we have stopped talking about it and we've actually implemented it. And I think we've done so in an equitable way. But it's not perfect. And I want to emphasize that there's no such thing as this perfection. But we've we've come very close and but I was very mindful that I wanted to make sure that this court. Could provide value for that growth we talked about uh this morning to the taxpayer. And that's what I like most about what you said, Commissioner, is that. We were able to provide value to the hundreds of thousands of peoples, people that we represent. That was kind of the highlight for me last night is when we showed the big chart on this unbelievably beautiful big screen at Del Mar. And when you look at the combined rate from the hospital district and Noises County, farm to market. You see that go down. And then we're able to show what that average hundred thousand dollar homeowner would save. And although it's not monumental, as Dale showed you in the presentation earlier, I think it was six dollars. I want to challenge everybody to say, but look what we did while lowering it six dollars. Look at this, look at the guardianship investigators. Look at the victim witness coordinators. Look at the extra constable. In Flower Bluff. You know, look at all of the amazing um. Things we did for law enforcement, for mental health, for intake and release, to open up our annex. I mean, the truth is, is that I wish I was writing for the Collar Times because, Tim, I could write a great article. Because it's it's so incredible to be able to have this type of collaboration. And I had to get Monica to bring me toast because I was actually nauseous this morning. I haven't been nauseous since I had Jackie. I mean, decades ago. I mean. But it's because it's it's scary to have this kind of um. Ability to to touch people's lives. You have the power to do good and you have the power to 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 do not so good. And this is really an an effort. And we worked late last night and we worked early this morning to make sure that it was perfect. And I and I hope I can answer any questions for any commissioners because the proposed budget. It's a little tricky to navigate if you're sort of used to the way your budget book looked before. And what I asked Dale at this time was to please answer any individual questions. So if you say. Where is blank? He can try to answer. And I did that this morning and he's like immediate. I said, where is? Coastal Bend Bay's industry, he says twelve eighty-five. So he can tell you where things are. So go ahead, fire away.
Okay, I want to make sure. We're only doing eleven through twenty-eight, right? We're not giving, and and the. Or what and and the whatever those three-year continuation people are.
Yes.
If you don't fall in those two categories, like and and then there's no. If you're in those categories, you get a raise, either the three-year continuation pay or.
Pay group eleven through twenty-eight.
Eleven through twenty-eight. Do we need to do a vote for our not getting our raises? Because this, does this indicate that we're still getting one? Because I want to make sure we talked about that.
We we made sure we 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 excluded all all elected officials if there was a a cost of living increase. Now, there are some elected officials that are qualifying for a continuance.
Right, if they're in the continuance group or.
That's all increase for the elected official would be a continuance.
Oh, okay. So, but but we.
Do you need to do anything?
Yeah, do we need to do anything to say? What do we need to do?
Well, uh, like I said, we have to by 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 the the budget laws and the rules I had to follow, I have to budget at a hundred percent of what your salary was or should be. Now, last year, y'all forgave certain increases. If y'all decided to do those same reductions, you need to send me a letter officially saying. This is what you want your salaries to be. However, the budget's gonna save the full amount.
Okay, so if I want my salary to stay the same, I just need you to send me a letter that says my salary stays.
That's correct. And we need to sign a letter from you on your letterhead.
Oh, oh, and I can't just send you an email?
No.
Okay, I'll send you a letterhead. Okay.
Our our laws now with with payroll says it has to be on official letterhead.
Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things too. Um, I just want to thank um. Everybody that worked on this budget. I think that everybody worked hard and a lot of hours and weekends and nights and whatever. And I'm. You know, I think all of us worked a lot of nights, you know, and looking at it and trying to change it the way we wanted it and hopefully it go that way or not. But um, you know, I think that um, Judge, you took you took the lead on this. I really appreciate the fact that. You know, you 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 saw that vision that that we all had, you know, we had sometimes and, you know, that we need to take care of those that. You know, that I don't know how they can make a living in in, you know, twenty-five thousand and twenty-six thousand. And hopefully that's not gonna happen again in Noises County. And thank you for taking the the lead on that and seeing that vision that that we saw and. Know it was important. Uh, I want to just uh, thank everybody else that Dale uh. On your group, thank you very much for for everything y'all guys did and for all the questions we asked and you gave us the answers. Whether they're right or wrong to others, they make any difference, right? But you gave us the answers, so. Uh, you know, as I want to thank that, but I think it's a good budget. I mean, there's still some things that I would tweak, you know, but. I'm not gonna bring it up, Commissioner. But um, you know, I I think it's a good, it's a good budget, you know, and I, you know, I just. Uh, you know, think that we took care of everybody we need to take care of. Uh, as far as I, you know, maybe there's a few more that could have taken be taken care of, but. I look forward for next year. Hopefully, we can work it out. Uh, but I think this is, this to me, uh, everybody, it's a winner. And not only that, you know, you just think our employees will probably be in a position where I say they really appreciate the fact that. They were probably in our vision and our tunnel to make it better for them. So hopefully in return, they're gonna make, they're gonna provide our citizens with a lot better services, a lot good, better attitudes. And all this skin that goes with it, you know, because, you know, because everybody's gonna be, everybody's gonna win. So I think our community wins because I think they're gonna come to the window, hopefully have a, you know, different attitude because they're not gonna have to pay more taxes. But we have to convince them and show them, Judge, one thing that.
We do.
You know, if we educate them that, you know, that the shards that we need to show them that we're not. The one that charges the most taxes, you know, you know, and and this one thing they don't understand. And it's like you said last night. They come here and pay their taxes, so they blame us for everything, you know, and, you know, and we hear that all the time. You know, he says, county, this county, which is. Now, I was, wait a minute, you know, look at the chart. And I carry a chart with me most of the time. I said, look at the chart, you know, see who's, see what you're paying.
I like that house.
Yeah.
That Dale puts.
I said, look what you're paying. And we used to have it in a circle before last year. I said, look what you're. Look what you're paying. And we used to have it in a circle before last year. I said, look what you're paying. So we were, and we're giving you all these breaks, you know, and, you know, sixty-five and over. I mean, where do you get those breaks, you know? And so we try to take care of veterans and we take care of the sixty-five and over. So I think we, I think we're doing good. And I think it was a good year, you know, and just we struggled through it, but I think we got to worry about the next coming years. So I just want to say that. Thank you very much for all your hard work, Judge, and everybody else that was involved. Tyner, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner, too, man. I'm going to leave you out. Okay?
Thank you.
Love you, man. All right. Thank you.
Carolyn.
I'm just glad we're done with the budget. We're almost there, but I want to commend you because you were able to work with all of us. And that is so important in government now because they're not doing it across the nation. And you can't get anything done without that. So thank you for doing that. Thank you, Dale. I know you had some sleepless nights, didn't you?
We blamed Lance. When he came back, the computers broke. He's laughing right now. Somewhere in a, in a cubicle, I guess. Commissioner Modus.
Judge, I, I know there's always areas that we can focus on and try to tweak, but I agree. I think you and the entire court have listened to each other and we know what's important. We know that we want to give relief and show that there has been relief. We want to give that living wage and that there's some, there's some give, you know, and cost of living, we know it's important. But I, I strongly know that we will follow up with a, a study to ensure that the, those professional grades get closer to where they should be compared to other counties. So I know that that'll be a part of our challenge for the next budget. But I, I think that, you know, this gives us a, a good insight of how do we feel? Is this something that we can all support, get close to supporting with maybe tweaks? I don't know if we're going to have any tweaks this year. I hope not. But I, I, I think that this is fair. I think it helps with saving money with recruiting. With, you know, when you retain, you, you don't have to worry about recruiting. You don't have to worry about retraining. So hopefully some of that pay helps. And I was with Juan as we were touring with the military out in Robstown and Benkety yesterday. And we were talking about, you know, do you think that this will help keep some of our, our guys in public works? And he, he believes that it will. So I, I think that that's really an important part that we go away with this. That's going to show the community and those who, prospective employees, hey, maybe I can go and apply with Noises County and show the current ones, we value you, we want you to be here and, and, and take, we take pride in you. We know you do great work and we want you to, to stay here, hopefully retire with this. So I, I think this is a a good and a fair budget. We had our priorities that we never let go of with collective bargaining and other important items. I want to thank Johnny and his board. They, they did great work in trying to help us out. I mean, once again, it's, it's an effort by all of us. It's not just one group or the other. So I think we've done well. I, you know, we've heard, I've heard some, you know, questions are that I've tried to answer from constituents or others and, you know, I always just try to give them the facts. And hopefully, once this is done, the dust settles, people still probably get worked up no matter what we approve or don't. But once it settles that we can sit down and explain to our constituents why we did what we did, some plans and projections for next year and how we really need to prepare for that and help support our bond rating. So we can help do these big ticket items that we know that we need to take care of here throughout the county as well. So those are all things that are, have been on my mind. I know they're yours. They're your priorities, Judge, and, and wanting to support that and just knowing that that's important for the county. So, thank you.
I appreciate that.
We're going to write you on your report, Tim.
Well, I, I, I also want to credit really all the electeds. You know, the budget workshop process is such that you get to come advocate for your, your team, so to speak. And I really, I think it was a great exercise. I, I want all the electeds to know that we, we value their insight and their input. But what we mainly value is their innovation. And I can tell you that this budget workshop season has yielded, and you're going to see this whether it's on this agenda or at upcoming agendas, it's yielded innovative ideas from elected officials' offices that had not been able to be presented before. And that is going to yield hopefully new sources of dollars for our county. And that's also comes from a spirit of, hey, well, I see that they're working, so I want to be a part of that success too. And that's, that's when it's very exciting. And I see it happening in our clerk's office. I see it happening in our JP's. I see it in our constables. And you're going to start seeing it too because you're going to see these action items on agendas from processing fees to our, to court administrator, PR. I think there's something on this agenda, a little bit about our district clerk. And so these are, this is kind of the snowball effect, if you will, in a hundred and thirteen degree, I guess it's not really snowball, but it's, it's the tumbleweed effect that occurs when good things start. And so I'm, I'm really pleased with this budget. I do want to ask Dale, is there anything else you think that we could benefit by before we do that, what I call the formalities?
No, Your Honor, just, just so, as, as, as the budget officer, first, I'd like to thank each of you for your hard work and giving us the relative data. We needed to try to get a finalized budget to provide for you. I need to thank Teresa and Tyner and their, their staff is what, working as hard as they did. I would need to thank every one of my staff and the hard work they put together trying to organize this in a, a reasonable fashion. And, and trust me, this, this thing's changed fifty times. And this is, this is the fifty-first time. So hopefully this is the last time. We're, we're, this is probably, this has probably been the cleanest season we've had for budget time, working with each of y'all individually, trying to give you the information that you needed and, and, and wanted at, at a, a relatively quick, as fast time as we could. So this is what we're providing to you and presenting to you as a, a proposed budget for the fiscal year nineteen, twenty. And we all kind of know that once this starts working through this, this process, we, I feel that I know that we're very conservative and, and the results we're showing here will, will be greater than what, what they are, what they're showing.
I like that. The fun balance to me, as you know, is a high priority. So I, it's music to my ears. I will report back at our next meeting about our Moody's meeting. So I'm excited about that ratings meeting. I'm excited to share with them about Noises County's growth, about some of the actions that we've taken to encourage growth, but to also take care of our resources, our assets and this courthouse. And so sometimes when we talk about the quality of our place, it's not just the wages we make, but it's the facility that we utilize. And so I, I think this court is wholeheartedly committed in this plan of finance that was presented earlier to take care of the resources and the assets that our folks not only work in, but our citizens utilize. So from community centers to fairgrounds, to coastal parks and inland parks, from Bishop all the way to Benkety, you're going to see infrastructure like you've never seen before. And I'm really excited about that. So Commissioner Vaughn?
I just want to clarify that we're going to have the opportunity to come back and change some of this if needed to because I'm already looking at my budget. And I know that part of it's my salary that I'm not accepting, but there is no way that I would increase a budget seventy-eight hundred dollars.
Make sure when, when the motion is, is say as, as, as adjusted. And that way I'll work with you and make sure it's right.
Okay.
The right numbers to, to fit in.
Because I think we all have a question. John and I were visiting and on the, did everybody agree to give their?
Can you make a motion?
It has to show. Is that what you told them?
It has to show. Unfortunately now, the, the laws changed. Last year I was able to exclude it. This year the law said I have to include it. So that's why you see an increase. But just your letter will, will reduce that increase.
Okay. So it appears that the budget has to be this way, but I think with your letter on file.
Or do we just, can we make a motion here to do it? Or we have to do a letter?
Uh, we need a letter.
On your letterhead.
It requires a letter.
Okay.
Just want to make sure.
Yes.
And electeds as well, correct?
We, we had to follow the rules that they, they put in front of us.
Not electeds.
We had to do the full amount of, of your, of your salary. Should for any reason, you, you have to, whatever it might be the case that, that you might need to be out of the office or whatever, the next person has to come in and know what their salary projection would be. And then with your letter, we can reduce your cost. So your budget might say eighty thousand, but you're only going to get paid seventy thousand, just rough estimates. So you'll see a ten dollar savings from your budget. So it's still there. So as long as we have a letter from y'all saying what y'all want your salary to be, that's all we need.
Okay.
And that would be for any elected official that so chooses.
Okay.
Seventeen.
Okay. So I think then Tyner, in the magic words, I need to add as adjusted at the end. And if you'll write that down as well.
Again, Judge, real quick, if I may, the auditor, Dale, awesome job. Master with the spreadsheet. The ability to change things quickly. Teresa in my office stayed on top of it. I want to commend the entire auditor's office. Julie helped us with the personnel part. Teresa went crazy. Margaret backed us up. Awesome job. Also Krista in the tax office.
Yes.
Helped us a lot with the notices and the timing, which was thrown off, but we got back on track. And the county attorney's office and Belinda, y'all. Belinda read every notice, every tax statement, every advertisement, every order that you approved today so quickly. The, the, the tax orders, everything she, we asked her to do, she reviewed it and she did it quickly. And so we appreciate that. Teresa, am I forgetting anybody to thank? And the, the, the court, y'all worked beautifully together. I hope this passes. I hope we hit the tax rate order quickly as well. But I want to commend this commissioner's court for getting us through this process in a very open way. Very, very open. I've been through a lot of these and, you know, everybody communicated and I've never seen it quite like that before.
We're wonderful, aren't we?
Y'all are wonderful.
Well, it, it, I love that movie, you know, remember the Titans that says, you know, character reflects leadership. Character reflects leadership, Captain. And so, and, and I really think that that's really what we all are. That's why when Edward comes in my office, I says, sit down, Edward, you're going to hear something. It has nothing to do with it in a park. Sit down. Because we're all leaders. That's how it's supposed to be, right? And, and so I just want to echo what you said, Tyner, and I'm ready to move on to the formalities. But I would be remiss if, if I didn't say thank you to Ernest, who came in at the eleventh hour, but the most important hour is always the eleventh hour. And really helped me, guide me and be an ambassador. If you ever want an ambassador, you want Ernest because he has a temperance that's just seventy-three degrees. And he never, he never asked too many questions. He just, he just asked the most important ones. So I'm really grateful. And, and Lisa and Dale and your staff, amazing. Teresa, you are, you know, our, Steve Waterman would be proud. He'd be real proud. Because we had to rely on you to help us build something that then we could then take to Dale, right? And honestly, if the employees want to know who their hero is, it is not me today. And it's not even anybody to the left or to the right, even though I want to thank my commissioners for supporting this endeavor for the employees. But you should know that you had an advocate in your HR director. And that's not to single one person out. But if I did not have an HR director who came to me and said, you see this? This is not right. You see this spread? This doesn't work. You see how this person won't be able to create enough incentives so they would want to be a supervisor? You see, that's institutional knowledge, but it's, it's people taking care of people. And guess what? Some people, in order to get corrected, got most likely a bigger jump. But you know why? Because they were further behind. And so you have to have a cheerleader. Nobody's perfect. Julie, you're not perfect. I'm not perfect. But you were pretty perfect about what you were advocating for. And that's what I expect for all department heads and leaders. Advocate for your people. Advocate for their resources. Don't stop advocating. Don't think we're not listening. We did as much as we could in this one book. But we affected over, or we will, if, if this proposal passes, over seven hundred and fifteen lives. And that is just why, again, when I, I get like, when I get really excited, I get nauseous. You can remember that one. But I'm really excited. Almost like to where I can't hold it in. The emotion is just overwhelming for me to be able to do something of this magnitude. But hear me, we were not perfect and we are not done. And with that, I would like to say that I move to adopt the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Noises County budget as adjusted.
Don't shoot me, but I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
I just can't, I can't do this. I'm looking here at the assistants pay and I'm all for people getting raises. But I don't want assistants to get more raises than we've given the rest of the people. And this looks to me like, is that a fifteen percent raise?
If they're, depending on their pay group, that possibly yes. But mine might be thirty-five percent.
Yeah. I mean, those are some big raises for our assistants. I mean, I appreciate what they do and they're good, but are you all okay with this?
Well, there's a pay scale. This as adjusted, let us provide you a pay scale. That can be, just so you know, it, your assistant is determined on a pay scale.
I know, but I, I mean, I just don't think, I, I, I'm not for this right here and he'll probably quit when I leave. But I just think that's too much compared to what we've done. I, I'm just not comfortable with this. And I think the reason some of us are doing it because we had one that said, okay, we're going to do it. So you can't do one without doing the other. But I think this needs to be reviewed. And this is just a proposed budget, right?
Yes.
Yeah, this is just our proposed budget. The most important thing to note is that it, what you're seeing is a reflection of pay scales eleven to twenty-eight. And if you'll think of them in three groups, eleven through seventeen, when you look, look at it, seven, eighteen through twenty-one and twenty-one through twenty-eight, Julie, I'm going to ask that you come and work with Commissioner Vaughn so she can see the whole spectrum.
I think it's more than that though. I think it's really, what I, I, I didn't like it when it was put in as a special reclassification. I wasn't going to support that. But when we changed all the pay grades, I also don't want to ding someone who's in that pay grade. Now, I think, I still think we need to tweak some of those pay grade because some of them got bigger percentages than others. And I'm not so sure we've got all that right yet. And so I, I, I don't want to say, okay, just because you're my assistant and everybody else gets a pay raise in twenty-five that you don't, because you're my assistant, that's not fair. But I do think we need to tweak some of these pay grade raises because, you know, the, the amount of money can stay the same, but there may be some, some allocation tweaking that still needs to be done because, like you talked about last night, Judge, where, you know, number twenty-one came up, you know, one of the twenty-ones said, hey, we're not there. And Dale said he's made some adjustments in twenty-one. So I, I, there still may need to be some movement.
There definitely needs to be more retweaking of the whole pay schedule with all positions. And that's why she keeps?
Eleven through twenty-eight, you mean?
That's why the judge, all positions.
Well, but we're just talking eleven through twenty-eight today.
But that's why she keeps, the judge keeps talking about a two-year or a three-year process.
No, no, I get it. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about eleven through twenty-eight today.
I think she's talking about her, hers. I think it's?
I understand, but in order to do it that way, Dale had to keep certain percentages between the pay schedule. And that means everybody that's in that pay group. So he moved it accordingly by a certain percentage each way because it goes down and across our matrix.
I, I get it. And I'm just saying, you may need to do some more of that within the eleven to twenty-eight right now. That's all I'm saying is to look at it because I don't want to, I don't want to say, just because you're my assistant, you don't get one. I don't.
Well, I don't either. And I agree with you.
Right.
Yeah. But I'm just going to state this and it's probably going to, this is the most ridiculous way to pay people I've ever seen. We have got to look at this. It's ridiculous. Just because you're in this group, you get a raise? That's crazy. It should be my merit and I don't know what we can do, but we need to start looking at some different, something else.
I, I do think, I just want to clarify because you brought up a good point. In case someone does look at the budget, the way your budget works is all your salaries are clumped together, right? So it wasn't that your assistant was treated any differently or any of our assistants. It's just that he's in a pay group that was treated a certain way across the board. And so you're, that's being reflected in that budget for transparency purposes. But I do think that this proposed budget, when you really study it, you'll see, and it is, if you want to know why it went fifty times, it's because it's a Herc, I can never say this correctly, Herculean effort. I did it. Herculean effort to, to really make sure that you have equity in the transition and within pay grade. So the supervisor isn't making a minimal amount. You're not disincentivizing people to go up the ladder and be promoted. This is not just a, I mean, it really, I can't overemphasize enough how difficult this is to really make it equitable. And yet it, it's not. It's not meant to be perfection, as I stated, but it is meant to. But it is meant to equalize, if you will, those salaries that are so out of sync. So when you, if you use percentages, it'll never look right to you. And I encourage you not to use percentages. You actually need to work with HR and understand the numbers.
Judge, you, you explained that really well and I see, I, I know what they're doing. But my point is, is in the real world, you get paid by merit by what you do, not because you're in a different pay scale. So one person gets into a scale you all get paid. I just disagree. I think it's wrong. I think you should get paid for what you do and how well you do your job.
And, and I, and you know, that's part of the argument that I have on continuance pay. I, I don't get this random, every three years you get a continuance pay raise. I, I, I don't think we've had a plan that, that, you know, in place. We're now trying to get to the plan in place and we need to deal with all of these things as we go down the road, which we've committed to doing. By going from 11 to 17, all the way to 28 at the last minute, it screwed up some of the tweaks and some of the discrepancies that you're talking about.
In order to push the bottom up-
But it did it in a good way.
You have to push the middle up.
No, 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 but it did it in a good way. I mean, because everybody's doing it. But that means we've created some more issues for ourselves down the road, which is what we're going to deal with. And, you know, those are things that, to me, and all need to be on the table because I agree with merit pay. I think it ought to be merit and I don't think we ought to just have a plan now that we're coming up with this plan to also have this just automatic continuance pay because it's just a weird-
We need to start early on addressing these issues and I know you will, Judge.
We will.
With regards to, you know, your question, we're not talking, I mean, yeah, we're talking in terms of raises, but it's really not a raise. It's a reclassification of the position. And everybody under that qual, that category is, is being reclassified. And unfortunately, I mean, that's something that can be looked at at later time in terms of what this position should be classified as in terms of duties and, and, and balanced out with the, the amount of salary based upon other, you know, other jurisdictions or whatever. So at some point in time, the assistants were classified as a certain salary range. And whether or not that was good or not, it's, it is what it is.
Laura, I didn't, I, I didn't really have a question. Y'all keep explaining that to me. I get it. I don't like it. I think it's wrong. And the people that pay these salaries, they don't get that. And I just think it's wrong and there needs to be a conversation next year soon before we go to budget and see if there's anything we can do to change. I just want to be fair. I want people to get paid. It's one of the reasons you look at the ones that, under $30,000, what they were getting paid is horrible.
Merit, merit pay is basically a, a race. And so one employee under the same category will get more only because of merit. But what we're talking about here is just the classification across the board.
I know, we're never, I'm never going to agree with y'all, ever.
Okay, um.
Go merit, go merit.
I'm going to go back to just calling, make sure I got everybody's comments and, and perspectives. Okay, the only thing we didn't leave, we left, I think I mentioned it before publicly, but in case I hadn't, one of the nice things also that we were able to commemorate is that there is going to be a kind of an all call for people who are interested in pursuing a possible student loan repayment. And you're going to be getting that advisory from HR. So in order to really find out if we can establish that in the new year, that will be something that HR is already working on and we've already made certain, we've set aside dollars for that. So I'm excited about that. So for the professionals who have spent many years studying to get their professional degree, we hope that this adds an extra layer of, of opportunity for them when they come to work at Nuasis County. And of course, the compensation study that you mentioned, Carolyn, and you mentioned, John, we need to make that a high priority in the month of September so that we know where we're headed. Okay, hearing no other comments, I, following my handy dandy Tyner cheat sheet, I move to adopt the 2019-2020 Nuasis County Budget as adjusted. Is that the correct terminology now? And I have a motion and a second. And all those in favor. I'm sorry, yeah, we're going to do a, a roll call vote. All those in favor, I will be calling the roll call vote and I'll start with Commissioner Chesney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Vaughn.
Aye.
Commissioner Mattis. Myself, Barbara Canales, County Judge, aye. And the next thing that we need to do is tackle the adopting of the Nuasis County Tax Rate. And because we've already had adequate presentation and discussion, I do move that the Nuasis County Property Tax Rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .311588, which is effectively at 4.21% increase in the tax rate. And do I hear, I'll second. Okay, I've got a second with John. And all those in favor signify, do you need a roll call vote on this as well?
Yes.
All right, let's do this again. Commissioner Chesney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Vaughn.
Aye.
Commissioner Mattis. And Barbara Canales, aye. Okay. Item K for consideration is the motion for adopting the Nuasis County Hospital District Budget. We'll go through the same exercise, first the budget, then the tax rate, calling the roll call. I do move to adopt the 2019-2020 Nuasis County Hospital District Budget and I ask for a second.
Second.
And all those in favor, roll call vote. Commissioner Chesney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Vaughn.
Aye.
Commissioner Mattis. County Judge, aye. Okay. Motion to adopt the tax rate for the hospital district. I do move to adopt a tax rate of .112421 for the Nuasis County Hospital District and to adopt the commissioner's court order. All those in favor signify by saying aye by roll call. Commissioner Chesney.
Aye.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're right, I'm too fast here. Sorry, I've got a motion by Gonzalez and a second by myself. And all those in favor in the roll call manner. Commissioner Chesney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Vaughn. Commissioner Mattis. And myself, aye. Quick housekeeping question, Lauda. Did we need to add the verbiage "as adjusted" on the hospital district budget as well? No? Okay, because that's theirs to do only. Okay.
Quick question, Dale. So remind me, the, the county's tax rate went down. The hospital district effective tax rate stayed the same. So that made our combined tax rate go down even more? So how much did it go down, the combined tax rate this year? Sorry. It's a significant, I mean, it's significant that we went down after going up last year. I mean, it's a, it's a big deal. Went down?
Publicary.
Oh, here it is.
It went down a total of .00675.
Which is a one and-
That's the combined, combined tax rate?
Combined tax rate.
Thank you.
Is that like a one and a half cent or what is it?
No, it's six hundred, six hundredths of a cent, .006.
Zero zero?
.00675.
That's, thank you. Okay, what's next?
Okay, what's next is that, um.
Consent?
Consent? Let me just, I'm just doing a double check real quick. Like, I think we've got everything covered. Uh huh, we are ready to pursue the consent commissioners, A through M. A through M, are there any to be considered for removal at this time for discussion?
Move passage?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. I'm sorry. Modus seconded? Okay. And we've already in the regular agenda done one and two and I don't know, we may want to call her. She was here sitting so patiently, but then had to leave. Well, I can skip it. If someone will call the district clerk and let her know that her archival fee is up. We'll go to number four. And this is discuss and consider an order approving continuation of the receipt of bingo prize fees that are pursuant to HB 914 of the 86th legislative session. And I'm going to authorize with this agenda item, staff to notify Texas Lottery Commission and Bingo Licensed Authorized Organizations. Is there a motion on this?
Which one, Judge? Oh, yes.
This is the bingo to get bingo-
So moved.
Dollars.
Discussion, I have a question, Judge.
Sure. Let me just get a motion and a second. We'll go right to discussion. I think I heard it. Motion and a second. And let's go to discussion. We've got a question. Go ahead, Commissioner Mattis.
Yes, thank you, Judge. So what I'd like to see is if, I don't know how the state breaks it down or if we even get the breakdown. But if we can get a copy of the locations and the amounts that are collected within the county, is, is, is it just, is that too detailed to ask?
I found a link and there's actually a listing of all the sites in our county that I can show y'all.
If you can send that to us.
And, you know, by the way, we get over $300,000 annually.
That, that was one of the things I put down in my notes a couple of months ago is I, if we don't approve it, we lose that $300,000. Is that to the general fund or what is that?
That goes to, straight to the general fund as other taxes, yes.
And that, that amount that we get, is that set by the legislature or who, who determines the amount that we get?
That comes from the comptroller. The comptroller uses the bingo tax based on certain population requirements of how it is. They changed the rules now with the last, the last, the last session that we are required to tell them we want the money or they, we don't get it. That's why we're, we're having this issue. And they're changing when they give us some money. So it's getting later and later and later in our fiscal year, but we still get the round $300,000 a year.
I have a, I had a question. Dale, let's see, I asked you about, same thing, about the monies in five years. We've almost got a million point five and point seven into it. And they say, you said it goes into our general account, right?
General fund, yes.
General fund. So, and I asked you, well, that brings the fund up, right? You said, "No." I don't know why.
Well, it's normal, it's normal, one of our, our, our other revenue collections that we receive that we do for operations. It's just like taxes and, and-
But everything that goes in there has to bring it up, right?
Yes.
I mean, we had, we have a balance of $700,000 and we put another, another $300,000.
Well, if we, if we didn't receive it before and receiving it now, yes, it would include, increase our fund balance. But we've been receiving this, I gave you five years, but this goes back many, many more years before that.
Right, but I'm saying, but every year, no matter what, if we get $300,000, it's like we've gotten $400,000 a year. $400,000, we, we say we get $400,000 this year. We've got $600,000 in the budget. So it's still got to come up another $400,000, right? I mean, do you put it in there?
Well, the $300,000 is already part of our revenue stream that we put in at the, the hundred, $100 million total revenue. So it's not new money, it's additional money we have and, and bingo tax is part of our, our normal revenue collections.
So how, so how do I know when we get $400,000 from them? What do we spend those $400,000?
Operations. Payroll, we pay, operations, we put for salaries, we put for office supplies, for normal operating, operating activities.
We already have that money designated for that.
The $300,000, yes.
Didn't know the, the money, our, our, our general accounts are already designated for that, whatever we spent.
Right.
But we, now we got another $400,000, so it's really a buzz.
From where?
Bingo.
That, that's part of our normal, normal revenue. So it's not new revenue.
How can it be part of the revenue usually? We don't know what one can.
We always get $300,000. That's what we always budget, so it's always part of our normal revenue selections.
Really $400,000, pretty close to $400,000.
Well, last year went down and we, we're told by the state it's going down again.
And we get that a quarterly or we get it at the end of the year?
We get it annually. We used to get it quarterly, now we get it annually. We won't get it till September. That's when the, when the state starts a new fiscal year.
Okay. I, I just now, I mean, I just want to see if we can keep some of these things a little, I mean, I like to keep track of what's coming in and really what's going out from it. But, because I know that also the, the fees, the fees for the shares office and constables, I know last year we brought in almost $400,000. And this year maybe $200,000, $300,000, maybe more, I don't know. But you said, I just need to, can we somehow quarterly get something, what's coming in?
You get it basically because it's on the collections for each JP and each of the, the, the district clerk or county clerk is, there are collections for the fat. We can give you a list of what the constable fees are, but we make sure we have it breaking down. We can do that for you.
Yeah, I just need to know what, coming in from those fees on a quarterly basis and the, the bingo and, and, and now that the county clerk, I think we're going up from $5 to $10, right? To collect for the fees? Is that what I, that's what I saw here? The fees that you're going to charge for the, what do you call those fees? The record fees?
That's what Ann's, Ann's coming next.
Oh, that's for Ann, I'm sorry. It's okay. I thought it was the county clerks. Didn't we also have one for the county clerk?
We have a $5 fee.
So we're going to start collecting that $5 fee, right?
I'll bring on the next.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if we have the fee, we need to start collecting them.
She does collect it, but we're going to do up to, the legislature gave us another $5.
I'm saying it'd be $10.
Right. And, right, for real property, right.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I mean, I just want to make sure we, if it's there to collect, we need to collect it, you know, because then everybody has money, you know, and in some sense we don't have any money. But if I know so much money's coming in from there, we can say, hey, you know, well, you brought in this much money. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No doubt. And, and this one is an important one, but I don't think, I'm, I'm, I want to get clarity, but I don't think we get to keep this one. I think this helps us do all our preservation. But it's okay because it's at least getting us preserved records. So I'm going to invite the district clerk, Ann Lorenzen, to come forward. This is an item that's number three on our agenda and it's basically-
Judge, on the other one?
We're going to go to four.
Oh, on the bingo? Okay, so sorry. We had a motion and a second. We had discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. And now we're going to talk about the archive fee of $10 on select district clerk filings. Hi, Ann.
Hi.
Thanks for-
So it's so good to finally be able to bring this
Yeah.
to commissioners. This is a fee that has never been collected.
Okay.
And our, as our archives sit and deteriorate more and more, I have pictures and all sorts of things I can show you at a later time. But yes, the, it is time to start collecting the archive fee. Now I do, in order to present the plan that I have for those monies, I do need to put in a fifteen day posting. So that plan will be presented at the next.
That's fine.
Uh, one of the next meetings in September. But I do wanna get the okay to start collecting that fee. It has been a budget item for quite a while. I know that as, as long as I've been here, it has been listed under the district clerk's revenue fund. But there was never any action to get the fee started or to get a plan started on, on what we're gonna do. So I've, I've been working with CO File and they are probably the premier preservation vendor for the district and county clerks of Texas. Very knowledgeable. We got a trip up to their place in Dallas where they showed us how they preserve everything and it's wonderful. Especially since we've gone through Hurricane Harvey, we do need to start looking at not only the archives, but the rest of the records that we have over there at the warehouse.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Try to get it digitized as quickly as possible. So.
They can help us with that Anne, they?
Yes.
Okay.
They certainly can. They could do, and what, and how they do it is they just take a bit at a time up to their factory in Dallas.
Yes.
And do it and then ship it back to us. It's, it's really a marvelous, I'd like to get you a, a trip up there just so you could see what.
That'd be fantastic. There's a lot of interest on the court to do that. I need to have the rec, to have them records digitized.
Right. And that's gonna be part of that plan. I'm wanting to do the index books and the minute books.
Okay.
That go back to the mid eighteen hundreds.
Wow.
Whenever the first filing was, that's how far back it goes.
Amazing.
And people are calling all the time for records that go back that.
Sure.
So we need to take care of it, so.
So this, so you need authorization to start collecting the fee. And so today's, and then you'll come back to us.
With the plan.
With the plan. And so let's get a motion and a second, then you can ask her some questions. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. And is there any discussion or further questions regarding this?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
So you said there, I guess selected filings?
Yes.
So it, it's just a variety of cases or there's various?
Well, it's all the civil cases and some, some subsequent motions. It's all set out in the bill, in Senate bill. Everything that we can charge this on is set out specifically. So we'll be adding those fees into Odyssey. So when those documents are filed, that will be added as a fee.
So this bill that was passed this session, I'm assuming?
Yes, Senate Bill six fifty-eight, I believe it is.
Have to look it up. Six fifty-eight?
Six fifty-eight.
I, I just, I've had a chance to be the record warehouse and they showed like one of the first ones that was filed like in the eighteen hundreds or whatever. And I'm very protective of it, but obviously they're deteriorating.
They're deteriorating and the, and the process is amazing. They had one lady that was just taking tape off. Tape is very destructive to documents.
I've got a question with the county attorney because it sounds like we're talking about two different things. Because Senate Bill six fifty-eight counts for your records and management fee.
It also discusses the archive fee.
You had both in the agenda. On the, on the background, you had both. So which one are we talking about?
We're, right now, we're just talking about the archive fee.
Just wanted to be clarified.
Okay. So that's the ten dollar archive fee.
And we'll provide advice because she is, she is, there are two different statutes. And there are certain processes that need to be followed before there's any collection. So I'm, you know, we'll bring the plan, we'll, we'll help them with the public hearing and everything that is required before she starts making any collection of any fees.
Okay, well, that's fine, but I think it's good for us to get the process rolling and get us to authorize it.
Correct.
So I'm gonna call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. I'm excited.
I am too.
I almost wanna get a, a sign, I'm really big into signs, but I like this idea of we're a modern county. And then, you know, say what we're doing, it's so important.
We're way behind in, in taking care of our.
Yeah, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make some.
We've got a start.
We're gonna get started.
Thank you Judge.
So that's great. Okay, thank you. The next one commissioners is the discussion of election judges and apportionment of election judges for the voting centers. Per commissioner precinct pursuant to, of course, the election code.
And Judge, I'll, I'll take this one if that's okay with you. It's a requirement in section thirty-two point zero zero two that in the August term of Commissioners Court, that you appoint election judges and attached to your item is a listing provided by the Democratic Party and a listing by the Republican Party for your approval. And when you approve this item, all this gets approved in the item. What happens with, with voting centers that, that is different under the old law? What's different now, there's voting centers in each of your precincts and you have to apportion the election judges in accordance with the last gubernatorial election to, to match up the voting centers with which party won in that election. That selects your election judge, the party of your election judge. So the elections, uh, office, help me with this. Commissioner Gonzalez, in accordance with the last gubernatorial, I'm going out of order. Let's take precinct one first. Commissioner Vaughn has to change to Republican to Democrat for correct apportionment. She has provided to me that she has selected Lulac Apartments and La Ratama Library. And I will notify the clerk of that. Precinct two needed to apportion one Republican to a Democrat. Commissioner Gonzalez has selected Grant Middle School out of the list provided. Precinct three has to make no change. And precinct four selected to change A and M C C to Democrat. If I can have that in a motion, we can get this, we can get this apportioned, the, the, the judges appointed and the, the judges apportioned properly.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions regarding those apportionments? To the precincts, okay. I meant the appointments, not the apportionments, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Okay. Moving along, the next one is discuss and consider approval of a license agreement with Arlington Heights Christian School and the South Texas Football League for purposes of using our county fields at Lyondale Basell Park.
So moved.
And all those in favor signify, I'm sorry, I need a second.
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Happy they're using those. Number seven is discuss and consider making determination of completion of construction phase for M and G Rosens USA LLC, now known as Corpus Christi Polymers. They were purchased in bankruptcy by Corpus Christi Polymers LLC. In accordance with provisions of tax abatement agreement approved October twenty-fourth, twenty twelve and subsequent amendments. And Mike, it did not go unnoticed how patient you've been all morning you've been here. I hope you had a, at least a cell phone with you where you could do some work, but thank you for waiting. This is a very important item. It just, we had a, we had a big agenda.
Yes, it did. And thank you for, for allowing me to come up here. Mike Colbertson, Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation. We do, I do compliance on all tax abatements for the county. Also doing for Delmar, other counties, city, those kind of things. Basically in the agreement in, in section two E, it talks about construction phase. And construction phase can be considered completed at the earliest of, of the different ones. For example, certificate of occupancy, if that's been issued. If the, if the entity is actually producing product and sending it out the door, if an architect signs it off as complete. And then the last one, number four, is at the end of the fifth year from the effective date of the abatement. And the abatement started January first, two thousand fourteen for the first service facility. It is up to the determination of the entity. And so this is what you are doing today. You're declaring that is, the construction is complete as of December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. And I stand by for any question?
Yes, stand by. We're just doing some technology. We don't happen to have the abatement up, the amendment, but I'm, I'm doing a quick search here.
I, I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
So this abatement's for ten years, right?
Right.
And it commenced in two thousand fourteen.
Yes.
And the last paragraph says this agreement shall extend until five years after the expiration of the period of the abatement. Can you explain that to me? Does that mean it goes five years more?
No.
Reading it wrong?
Yes. So the construction part is five years and then it goes on for another five, but it's limited by statute to ten. So yes, it's ten.
Then the other question, who makes sure they're following the agreements that are in here, like the jobs, y'all do?
Yes ma'am, I do.
And he regularly reports that to the EDC board. I mean, he comes back in and tells us on a regular basis.
And I provide the county with a.
Just making sure.
Yes ma'am.
We, don't worry, we ask him all the time.
Okay, so I'm up and running now here on my screen, Mike. And I just wanna make sure for, for clarity and thank you for being here as, as you come to me often and talk about the compliance issues of the different abatements that we have. And so just for clarity and the record, Mike cited on the amendment, you know, you did it right, Mike. I'm just playing catch up and repeating. But it's, it's number one and it's E four. And so basically at the end of December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, that's the last day of the fifth year of this abatement, construction phase is done.
Right.
And because it is now August twenty nineteen, we know that that is later in time than December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. So this amendment clearly states forth the parameters of construction and therefore construction is over. And it's over by the amendment. It's not, you know, the, the contract speaks for itself. So if there are any questions for Mike, he'll be happy to have them, but I would like to do a, a motion.
Ten years is a long time, but do we do five years for construction and five years for after?
Uh, sometimes, it depends on how large it is. If, if it's under five hundred million, under seven hundred fifty-one million, it's three years of construction. So it's, it's not, it's not always.
Right. And, and I, and I should point out that the county attorney and I have had lots of discussions about this particular abatement agreement. It is highly unique and that this is an abatement agreement that went through a bankruptcy. If you, I want everyone to read this agreement when you have a chance. If you need it, I'm gonna send it to Tyner right now, but it's two things. It's an agreement and then there's an amendment to the agreement that was done in twenty seventeen to contemplate this extra time given. And now that extra time is over. And it was over in December twenty eighteen. And so there's a clause in there that says that, you know, it talks about a lot of things, but it talks about bankruptcy and how to calculate when they don't do certain, they don't meet certain parameters, like certain investment parameters. And it talks about jobs. And so this will be the subject of much discussion in, in upcoming meetings. But for today, the purpose of today was to acknowledge that, that the court had a record of saying, well, it is past December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. So we're done, done.
But if construction is done, done too?
No, it's not.
No, it's not anymore.
No, it's not. In fact.
I thought you said it was done.
This is just a.
Well, it's done, the contract says it's done. And that triggers certain legal obligations and, and that's what we will discuss in further meetings. But for today's purpose.
We have to do for legal purposes at this point in, in the deal.
This is not giving or not giving an abatement.
This is just.
That's right. This, this, this contract abatement, this contract called the abatement agreement was given some time ago. And then it was amended in twenty seventeen. And per that amendment, we're able to now say, we choose to, to acknowledge and memorialize that construction is done.
Move passage.
And motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign.
No.
Thank you.
But are you, I wanna make sure, I don't mind going back, but do you know that the construction phase, you want it to be done?
I, I, I just have a problem with the project in general.
So do we.
That comes before us, I'm not gonna support it, period.
I know, but this is to our advantage.
I know, but I'm just saying.
No, no, this is good for your position.
Right, this is, will get us, we, I agree with you.
We, I do too. So I just make sure you know what you're voting no to. You're voting no to, I think you may be voting no to something you, I'm not trying to, but it's confusing. That's why I asked, because I'm, I agree with your position, so.
Yeah, in other words, in order to contest this abatement, we need everyone to acknowledge the reason that we're gonna contest it is because construction is done. They don't get anymore. Now, now they trigger.
Then I, then I.
I think you misunderstood. I'm on your side, just.
Yeah, we are.
I just want, I don't want it to come back and go, why didn't you support that?
Yeah.
No, no.
You're with.
I am with.
Yeah.
That perspective.
Yeah, that's the perspective. It's only for the purposes of saying we're done here. But if you could please.
You want to or?
Yeah, this is.
He wants to change, I think he wants to change his vote on that last vote.
Yeah. Hey, and just so you know, I just sent the abatement agreement and the amendment to Tyner. And I like it for open meeting stuff for him to disseminate. But I want you to read it and remember that he said that one E four. That's what I want you to read. And then hopefully, Loudah, we can talk about this at another date. Mike, thanks again for coming. Okay. Okay, we're, believe it or not, we're humming now. Okay. We did eight and nine already. Ten is an adoption of a resolution approving an agreement for equipment for TDMV relating to titles and registration. And this is something that.
This is routine Judge.
Routine. Right.
Move passage.
Yes. Kevin could be here, he had a meeting, he had to be.
He told me, but he said this is important to get this resolution to approve the, the agreement that he always does with, for the equipment. Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. And then discuss and consider LJ, number eleven, sorry, come on up Edward. Discuss and consider selection of LJA Engineering for engineering services for County Road thirty-five, which is Saratoga to County Road twenty-six A and execute this contract. Give us a brief summary and then we'll.
Essentially, it's a extension of the existing contract. We're just trying to redo the, adding time, it doesn't add money, it's just a.
Right, no money, just a little time. We need to make some corrective action here.
They did it in two, in two stages.
Two stages.
They went all the way up to twenty-six A, then, then from there they went to twenty-six. And this is just, they're doing the phase, the second phase of it right now.
So moved.
Okay. And all, I need a second for this. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Maria, come and tell us, this is like, I think the, a final, just a formality for CDBG. We've already done the.
Yes, we reached the end of the second public comment period for our applications to the Texas General Land Office for their coastal, I'm sorry, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. So it's just a, it's a GLO requirement, a HUD requirement to just kind of encourage public participation. So I am gonna read the final project list one last time to make it very clear what we're applying for and then give you kind of a brief timeline of, of what is going to happen moving, moving forward. So the project list is as follows. Nuasis County Road sixty-seven, south from FM six sixty-five. The estimated project cost is one million three hundred fifty-nine thousand fifty-three dollars. I do have a list if you wanna print out of it. Nuasis County, County Road sixty-nine from County Road forty-eight to County Road fifty-two. Estimated cost at one million two hundred seventy-two thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. Bauer Road Improvement Project in Robstown from County Road forty-four to State Highway forty-four at an estimated cost of one million sixty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The Nuasis County Emergency Notification Marquee Sign, that's the marquee sign out at the fairgrounds. Estimated project cost of two hundred ninety-seven thousand one dollar. We did submit two applications to the Texas Division of Emergency Management. Their Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which requires a match. So the next two projects are just the match amounts for those applications. The first is the Nuasis County Wide Drainage Plan and Hazard Mitigation Action Plan Update at a match cost of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the Nuasis County Courthouse Emergency Generator at a match cost of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We do have two alternate projects. In the event that we do not receive the hazard mitigation money from the Texas Division of Emergency Management, we have County Road thirty-three Drainage Improvements at a estimated cost of six hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And in the event we have legal issues with the Bauer Road Improvement Project, we will then do Nuasis County Road seventy-seven from FM twenty-eight twenty-six to County Road thirty. And that is also an estimated cost of one million sixty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So the application is due on Friday. We are expecting an award decision within the next one or two months. So they're looking at the end of October with an anticipated contract execution of the end of December. Once we are awarded, if we are awarded, the project will be two years. There will be no contract extension. So we will start working kind of with the assumption that we will be getting this allocation. The total amount is four million six hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars. And so we recommend approval of the resolution before you today just authorizes the submission of this final application.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second? Hearing a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Okay. Public Works, Juan, come on up. You've got a nice listing here, so just kinda, as they say, hang around. But the first one is a change order for the McKenzie Jail and Exfire Alarm Replacement Project. As I understand it, this is the really, the important thing to get us up and running.
Yes ma'am. It's a recommendation from Public Works to approve the change order number one. And it's just for some additional dampers that weren't part of the original scope of work.
But are needed.
That are needed, yes ma'am.
Move passage.
And all, okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Now we have a deductive change order for Hilltop on the ADA modification project.
Yes ma'am, this is, Public Works recommending approval of the deductive change order for Hilltop. This is some testing that was done that the contractor is responsible for paying. So it's the deductive change order from the contractor to be able to pay Terracotta.
And motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold on, do you wanna add something?
Yes ma'am, we are having a final walkthrough next Tuesday, next Tuesday with the contractor and.
Carol.
So we'll be, we'll be doing a final walkthrough on Tuesday.
Oh, L and V, not, not, not the ILA.
Not, not the ILA.
Not the ILA. Okay. Okay, anyway, well, that, that moved passage.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, okay, number three, Juan, is discuss and consider the 30-day contract extension with Lockwood Andrews, so that we can finish up the capital improvement plan project, so that now that we've got a plan, the finance plan, they'll take us through that.
Yes, ma'am, you're recommending a 30-day extension.
Okay, and.
For completion of the.
And for budget purposes, Dale, since that came out of our funds at the county judge's side, I would recommend that, that that continue.
So there's no, did they get this squared away, weren't there some projects included in the CIP that?
Yeah, that's why we need to.
Had already completed, was there something about some of those that were?
I'm not familiar with.
Not completed, but funding sources would need to be changed, for example, like, they didn't know that, in other words, we now have a.
Sorry, funded was the word, I should have said.
Funding.
Funded was the word, I think.
Correct, funding needs to be reallocated, so like, the number of 120, I told Noe this morning, I think it's really more 100. I don't think, for example, the medical examiner's office will be 25 million, but they don't know that until I added my comments. So now that we have a plan of finance, I won't lie to you, we just finished budget and everyone's exhausted, but we need 30 more days of hard work to really get the CIP in shape, so that you know how we'll address the 40 million in projects.
Move passage.
It's really important. Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, goodbye contract with Malik for the installation of the water chiller for the annex.
Yes, ma'am, Public Works recommending the purchase of the temporary chillers and electrical for McKenzie Annex, this is a requirement, and it's for Malik, and it's through the vibe board.
And who's, who's recommending?
I'm sorry, smart guy.
What did you say, someone's recommending, what did you say?
Public Works is recommending.
Oh, Public Works, oh.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And this is already in the budget for all the?
Yes, sir, we have, the monies are available, move.
Okay, second.
Okay, having a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Hey, as long as I have you here, and I won't hold you to an exact date, but you might want to give the court an update, what we're thinking now, now that you've got these items approved.
Yes, ma'am.
On opening.
The new, the new jail, or jail will be, we're trying to get a temporary, or we are going to get a temporary COO by mid-September, so by mid-September, we'll have a temporary COO, the only thing we're finishing up was a temporary generator, so by mid-September, we'll be complete with that.
Need those beds.
Put on the temporary COO.
Need those beds.
What's that?
He says need those beds, but I do love this calendar, this timeline's, Juan, you've just been, I mean, working like crazy on it, but it's really important, keep us updated, you know, we also want to know if there's anything.
We've got those manpower in there.
Yeah, this is very good. Receive the update, Juan, on the elevators, and discuss sources for modernization, just so you know, I don't know if you were in the courtroom earlier, but we have discussed a funding source or modernization in that, we'll do a tax note slash refunded CO, but it's still okay to bring it up.
Elevators, the ones at the tower, you know, there's some minor stuff that will come up, they have been fixed, again, you know, it's like anything, it's like a car, right, you still got to do maintenance on it, so we are, it's in, you know, they are working, there was one elevator at the jail that's still not working, it's elevator number nine, and we'll be looking at that elevator to try and see how we can get it fixed.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, it was, it was a hard several weeks, Juan, but I think that the switch to Tyson Krupp, or Tyson Krupp is really, was a major issue for us, thank you for making that adjustment, because I don't feel like we would have had elevators but for.
Yes, ma'am, and I just want to point that, and you're right, Judge, we did have Tyson Krupp come in a couple of weeks ago, they came in within a day and had elevators three and four up and running within the day, so just kind of want to give you an update on that.
Thank you, and that kind of segues, that kind of segues into number six.
That's correct.
A little bit, if you'll go ahead and.
Yeah, on.
I have an agenda item for close session.
So really, all we're going to do then, Laura, is just, do you want to hear from him in background? Just give us background, don't, just leave it at that, and then we'll talk about it in executive.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, Public Works is recommending that we terminate the contract, the maintenance agreement with the Chandler Elevator Court.
Okay.
We do have some areas where we have been waiting for a while for them to come in and fix the elevators, for example, those two elevators, you know, that we have been waiting for two months, Tyson Krupp came in and fixed them within a day, that's one example, plus we saw some other items that we requested from them, but they had never provided within the years passed, and I just want to make sure that we, it would be good, it would be good that we, that we terminate the contract.
Okay, and obviously, Laura, we'll, we'll take this to executive session, we thank you for the update, Juan, and we're going to have, put you on standby, so that you can provide more information as a resource, okay?
Thank you.
All right, and now I'm going to move to Michael, who we missed last week, we missed you at, on Friday's employee appreciation, so let me be the first to say we appreciate you, and I hope you enjoyed your well-deserved time with your family.
I did, I was knee-deep in Chesneys area over in Port A with, fishing with my father, who I hadn't seen.
I'm delighted.
Who I hadn't seen in about a year since my son got married, so it was really nice.
Oh, my gosh, well, I'm delighted that you had it, but as they say, welcome home, we've got a ton to do.
In fact, I think I wrote, I wrote this item while I was casting a line, so.
Okay, so take us through it, it's a, it's a, it's a method of procurement for Restore's Council Bucket, number two.
Yes, this is to request for qualifications for engineers, plural, or engineering firms, to assist in the development, design, and implementation of drainage-related projects to be submitted to the Restore Council's Bucket Two funding, authorize the purchasing agent to publish a notice and adopt an order delegating evaluation authority to a selection committee, and that committee comprises of the purchasing agent, the county engineer, Commissioner's Court manager, director of the grants department, and the county judge, or designate.
It looks good, Michael, does anyone have a motion for me and a second? All second, and all those, actually, any discussion?
Just a question.
Sure.
First time I've ever seen Council's Bucket Two, what is that?
I'm going to defer to Maria.
Yeah, so, so that's just the, so Restore Act, it has different bucket, isn't that funny? That's actually how it's referred to, it, Bucket One, Bucket Two, Bucket Three, and they each provide different types of funding for different types of projects, and we're still in Bucket One for some things, but Bucket Two has just begun, isn't that interesting?
I agree.
Yes, we did submit a placeholder item, Maria did, and this would be to get the professionals necessary to move forward.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, and so I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. And then the Nuasis County Purchasing Policy, you have an approved, you have an agenda item to amend it.
Yes, this is something that has probably, it's been going on since back in 2009, the state increased the requirement for competitive bidding at that time from 12 and a half thousand up to 50,000. Shortly thereafter, the court created a policy where items that were between 25 and 50,000 would be placed on consent agenda for review and approval by the court, and that's in addition to the three quotes that are currently required for any items that we purchase over $5,000. So what this does in effect is kind of hamstring a lot of the county operations from being able to respond quickly to conditions such as jail cell doors and the juvenile department, they had an item that was just slightly over $25,000, and they had to wait three to four weeks before they could respond to that need. We've had fire safety inspections that would have been able to, been passed because of this dollar range, we've had single-vehicle purchases, AC repairs at the fairgrounds, the jail parking lot fence project was one that would have been handled more expeditiously had we not had this additional requirement, and it places a little burden on me, because I have to prepare to speak to every one of these items, which routinely never get called, they always get passed, and.
So let me.
You know what? Go ahead.
One, one thing, Mike, that I want to really try to add to this thing too, I know this is good, I mean, I agree with you, we really need to change it, but, you know, I think that asking for three proposals is really a pain in the neck, you know, and sometimes it's hard to get three proposals, I think, we, there should be a two proposals here, and I don't know if we.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a recommendation.
Yeah.
Well, what's the state law, because I was asking, I was going to ask the same thing on that $5,000 deal.
There's, that $5,000 deal is a county policy, it's not a state law.
Yeah, it's our policy.
The, the state law is the $50,000 rule, am I correct?
That's correct.
So, I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez.
So we're going to change that, I think we should change the three proposals to two proposals.
Or maybe, maybe even one.
Do you want to change the word recommended?
Well, my, my problem is, I've had some issues out in Port A where we can't get people, we can't get three people to go to Port Ransus and make bids, or make proposals on something, right, some, and I'm sure you do in some of the smaller communities too, so.
And so the requirement is, is that you, is currently stated as that you request three, you may not receive three, but that you solicit at least three vendors to bid on a project.
This is required.
You say require, and then I try.
Required to solicit.
Somebody did one time, and they call me and say, hey, you got to have another one.
This says, this says, well, in here, says require, and your predecessor always made me get three, so she read it as require, so, I mean, I don't know, I'm with him, I, that's, so I don't know what it reads, but I think we got to change something.
I think we need to change it, so.
We can bring it, we can bring it back, we can bring the other one back.
We can, can we just amend this right now, on the floor?
Can we just amend the language?
I don't have, I don't have the other, do you have the other language?
Yes.
Whether or not that could be amended? Let me see how this is worded.
It's ridiculous, and when we were doing all that, oh my God, five, $10,000 jobs.
First of all, see.
For $5,000 jobs, you're sending all the way to Port A, for all the way to Bishop, for all the way to Benetton, I mean, come on.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, we're going to have to change the order.
I mean, maybe just say.
Request.
Whatever, just give me a little flexibility.
Yes.
I would say, just one, a request.
Right, whatever, yes, process begins with the Department obtaining. I mean, I'm always going to try to get more than one, because I want the best deal, but, and maybe it's down to two, maybe you're right, maybe you go two.
Yeah, you have to compare, second opinion or something.
I'm, I'm good with what Commissioner Gonzalez is saying, just make it two instead of three.
Saying, saying two quotes, that's fine.
Do that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, the order as written is fine, we were just making sure, and the notice is fine, so we're good.
Yeah, so the order's fine, the notice is fine, and we'll just change the wording in chapter five in that sentence where it says the process begins with the Department obtaining, instead of three quotes, it'll say two quotes from vendors for a purchase between 5,000 and 49,999.
Right. Second.
And any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, thank you.
And thank you, guys, I checked off one of my 15 things today with this.
Oh, great.
We like to check it off.
Dale, we have a budget change order, it's in, in number E, in letter E, behind tab E, if everybody wants to turn to that, you'll take us through it.
Yes, Your Honor, I'll go through several, a little bit quickly, because it is getting late today, I will go through the major requests that, for this, this is budget change order number 21, you'll see the largest ones are at the bottom of the first page, where the McKenzie Jail Annex Building, and that's what Juan had just recently brought up, a, a cost of why this is being increased, is because the temporary generator that they have to set up for there, they need the funding to move it for, so we're moving that from the building superintendent's budget for, to cover that, you'll see a reduction of $20,000 for general administration, and that's on page two, the district clerk is, is in a really desperate need of office supplies, because that's where last year they took a lot of their cuts from, not necessarily allocating it correctly, so they, they need the, this funds to be able to cover their office supplies and expenses for this particular function, and that's where the largest portion went. On 4190, that's just reallocation of some funds for our community services project that Edward needed to cover repairs and maintenance, and they have that budget available in their food items. At the very bottom, you'll see the road and bridge as a, a change of 35,000 for equipment, as well as professional services change, as you know, there, some of their, their equipment is getting aged, and, and, and once it gets older, the repair costs are going, going very high, so that's why that need is for, and on the last page, page three, the Department 0170 Inland Parks, again, because some of the age of the equipment is requiring additional costs, and they need to be able to move the funds, the funds are available in these departments that, that are requesting it, and those that didn't was able to borrow from another department or our general administration department, the funds are available for these requests, I submit this for your approval.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the district clerk, because she got, some of her budget was less last year.
Yes.
She needs $20,000 more for office supplies?
Yes.
So how much was her budget cut last year?
She cut it by 25,000.
She cut it by 25,000?
Yes.
Okay, seems like an awful lot.
Yes, we, we agree, but that's where, when, when, we got her request last year, when we did the cross-the-board cuts, she took 100% away from office supplies without kind of doing some thought about where it might be, and this year, it determines what additional costs that they need, they need the office supplies back to cover the operation of the department.
And I understand that, I'm just saying, we, I just think we got to be more careful about what.
Yes, exactly, yes.
That's a big hit.
That's what I have to submit for, budget change order number 21.
And forgive me, I'm just, I was playing catch-up and focusing on, on something on the previous page, the equipment and vehicle for, for inland was, what was that again? I missed that one.
The age of their equipment's getting kind of.
The age, okay.
Some equipment's getting very.
Got it.
Very expensive to repair, we will be bringing something relatively soon, I know Michael and I are working with a, a company to kind of do a proposal, I know it still has to be bid out, so, but they're going to come, try to give you a proposal possibly of leasing some of our, our requirements, which would kind of reduce some of those costs.
About to ask you about that.
But that's what, well, it's too late for our budget this time, but it, it probably wouldn't have affected this budget anyway, but, well, this is something that we can work on for next one.
Okay, super.
Move passage.
Okay, thank you, I've got a motion to move passage, and a second coming from.
Second.
Carolyn, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, okay, all right, great.
Bing, bang, boom, executive session, here we go.
So I just want to mention that it's been a long day, it's been a good day, but, you know, the, the agenda book reflects two things, one, how active we are, and two, how much we need recycling in this courthouse. Maggie, I want to, you know, as they say, henceforth and forevermore, please get with Tiner so we can get this on the agenda, whatever's holding up recycling, let it not be held up anymore, look at all this paper, the trees, the forests, think of the planet Earth, think of the BBC Channel, the Discovery Channel, we really need to do that, it's just so much paper, okay, the truth is, the city has amazing receptacles, someone should call and figure out how we can get the same ones, because they're the easiest, they, they look great, Carolyn, I don't know if you.
I can find out.
Know who that is, but, okay, at this time, I'm giving the public notice that Commissioner's Court does elect to go into executive session to discuss matters listed in the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, chapter 551, the Texas Government Code, we do elect to do so at this time regarding an agenda item, and the sections that are applicable in Vernon's are 551071, 072073, 0740745, 768687, and we are going to be consulting with our attorney, including with, shoot, my goodness, we will consult with our attorney including matters related to litigation, real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development, and/or any other matter that may be discussed as appropriate in executive session, we will come back out after executive session and may elect to take any action as we deem appropriate on items that were discussed in executive session, and I'm gabbling us out at 1:20, we shouldn't be too long at all. It's 1:35, and gabbling us back in from executive session, and we do have one action item to take up, and at this time, I think we're ready for a motion with regards to that item.
Judge, I would move that we terminate the Schindler contract.
And to send notice.
And send notice.
And hearing a motion, a second, and having had plenty of discussion in the back, anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign.
I'd still like to make a motion to close the public, oh, no, my bad, my.
And at this time, I'll ask for adjournments in memory of, and ask if there's, if there's any today.
Was there a second, I'm sorry?
Yes, there was, it was Commissioner Gonzalez, and I'll ask if there's any adjournments in memory of from the court, I don't have any, okay, hearing no, no personal adjournments in memory, I'll just echo what we do all the time, which is that for those Nuasis County